I will call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen in Millville to order at 7:00 PM on Monday, April 24th. And before we do the pledge, just a quick roll call.
Roland Barrett.
Richard Remmelt.
Andrew Olward.
Jennifer Gill.
Peter Crusoe Town Administrator.
Matthew Maile.
Great, and I will do the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we have a joint meeting tonight with the Finance Committee, so I'll have them call their meeting to order.
Yeah, I'll call the Finance Committee meeting to order, so 7:02, and, um, April 24th.
Speak to you later. Um, okay, so we have an update from Ryan Fatman. Ryan, are you with us? Can you hear? Oh, we can't hear you yet. I'm sure our cable person is right on top of it. There he is.
Can you hear?
No.
Are you coming in?
Yes, there we go. Perfect. So Senator Fatman, thank you so much for coming tonight. I really, really appreciate it. I know that all the board really appreciates it. Um, and I guess kind of the biggest concern that we have is around our budget, which is typical. So we noticed that there was a change in funding from the state for regional school districts, and that impacted Millville significantly. We're still getting to the final number, but it's been bouncing between 150 and 170. I don't know if you have any insight into that being, the contribution from the state being consistent in that way? And then we do have a few earmark requests as well, if possible.
Sure. First, thanks for having me, and also I apologize for not being with you in person. Had a little bit of an issue with my new dog. We have a puppy in our family, and she had to go to the vet today unexpectedly, and I'm waiting to pick her up. So, um, thank you for, you know, your tolerance on that. Um, yeah, with regards to the budget, so as you're probably aware, Governor Healy had proposed her budget, which was about $55.5 billion. It was a 14% increase over the year previous. And the House unveiled theirs about two weeks ago, and that was $56.2 billion, so not quite a billion dollars more than her, but larger. And actually, right now, they're going through the process of amending the budget and changing it in various ways that will impact the final numbers, and we get our opportunity to do that in the third week of May, starting around May 22nd. Um, so it is a very fluid situation. There are definitely some amendments that have been made from the House budget that I think will benefit the town of Millville. For example, per pupil minimum spending, when Governor Healy had proposed her budget, it was $30 per student. The House doubled that. Um, so it's a step in the right direction. Our hope is that in the Senate, when we take it up, it will also be increased. That's basically for our schools, the number-one line item in Chapter 70, the state education formula, which allows us to help towns like Millville, Blackstone, Mendon, Upton, Sutton, Douglas, schools that have had declining enrollment. We have a enrollment, I'm sorry, a formula that's based pretty much solely on wealth and enrollment. And so for our area, that has never been beneficial. Another thing that I think will help is there's a lot of talk about increasing the circuit breaker for special education costs. Um, as you're probably aware, there's a really interesting debate around last November's election about question one and the income cert tax that did pass by the voters. There's various proposals about how to spend the money, you know, which is estimated at about a billion dollars. That billion dollars is supposed to be spent on education and transportation, but the devil's always in the details. The governor's budget had proposed spending 51% on transportation, 49% on education, and the vast majority of the education would go to certain line items like special education, which is a good thing, but also others like expanding education programs, for example, giving free tuition for community college. Uh, that's something that I'm really concerned about. Uh, you know, I think that this money should be used, I didn't agree with ballot question one, but now that it exists, I think the money should be used to help fix our educational problems that exist K through 12, uh, which are usually more than 50% of municipal budgets. And, um, the House does a little bit more towards that than the governor did. They evened out the spending 50/50, and there is a proposal about, um, community college, but it's more limited in nature, which avails more money, um, hopefully for municipalities and school districts, uh, when it comes to education. Um, you know, just a few concerns, and then I'd be happy to talk about, um, you know, any earmarks that you guys are seeking. I know Mike Soder is in the process of trying to ascertain some more money for roads for Millville. I saw, um, an amendment for a fire hydrant, um, some capital equipment for the police department, all of which, you know, I'm happy to try to pursue with him. Um, but one of my concerns is just, uh, that 14% increase in the budget. You know, most of the revenues that are being anticipated, to give you a brief history of them, so for 30 straight months, the Commonwealth had receipts in excess of what revenue projections were, which was a great indication. Uh, but then in February, that all changed, and it was $60 million under, which isn't a significant number, but it broke a trend. And then the next month, you know, there was a lot of financial panic because of, um, you know, some banking and financial crises that played out. And I had my meeting, every member of the legislature has a meeting with their share of ways and means to talk about budget priorities, most of which mine are always local and municipal-based, um, to try to help the towns that I represent. And, um, he had said that he was greatly concerned about the revenue projections. Now, they did pick up in March, and they're anticipated to look pretty good in April as well. Um, but there, there's been a trend downward and a slowdown, which is really concerning. And when you couple that with a budget being 14% over the last year on the governors and like 15, 16% in the House, and that's built upon wage revenues, uh, like sports betting, wagering revenues, online lottery, marijuana, um, things that will definitely ebb and flow based on the economy. One of my concerns is having a structural deficit for the next, um, budget, FY '25. So, um, you know, I'm definitely willing and happy to help with, uh, budgetary items. Um, I like to make them capital in nature because I think, you know, that gets you the best bang for your buck, and it's something tangible. But I do have a real big concern about the state of our budget, um, long-term, and I've been warning all the towns that I represent just to be very cautious, uh, because if that does turn, the past history has been to go after local aid, and, um, that is really concerning to me. So, um, I think to be forewarned is to be forearmed, and, uh, I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, but that is something that I just am, I have been picking up on and concerned about.
Okay, that's great. No, we appreciate the, you know, I mean, it's reality, so we have to kind of deal with that. Um, and it's great that you kind of hit on the earmarks already, so roads, the fire hydrants, um, some capital items for police, so that's exactly what we would want you to kind of move forward with for, with Representative Soder. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments for Senator Fatman?
No.
Okay, does anyone else have, anyone from the floor? Yeah, please, Jerry. Can you stop, you're gonna, because he's only gonna hear if you're talking to the microphone.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Senator, just questioning, uh, do you have any idea of what the Chapter 71 is gonna look like in transportation? I know it's been bandied around a couple of different numbers. Have you got any indication of which way you think it'll end up being?
So, one of the things that's always interesting when you look at what the House proposes versus the Senate, uh, the Senate tends to be higher for regional school transportation and regional schools. Um, and the reason for that is we have more regional schools in our districts, because our districts are bigger. Um, so I've got four in my district, and, um, that's a little bit unique, but, and on the high end, but, um, I anticipate it being a larger number. I've also talked to Dr. DeFalco about some of the drivers of his costs, and, um, I would say, I think you have, um, you know, a superintendent who's very in tune to the financials. I spent a good 30 minutes with him on the phone one day, just going through his budget to see if I might be able to help. And, um, you know, I then spent a good hour on the phone with, um, the Massachusetts Regional School Association, MARS, and, um, you know, I do think that this cert tax money that was put into a trust fund in both, um, budgets, the House and the Senate, will likely be put in a trust fund in the Senate as well. And I'm gonna make several amendments to try to see that that is addressed specifically to, um, regional schools and then towns' obligations to vocational schools, uh, because those have been, um, significant. And, um, the last thing I'll say, and I know this is a little bit off-topic, uh, it's, it's on the topic of education, but it's a little off-topic from regional school transportation, though somewhat related. Central Massachusetts doesn't have an agricultural school. Um, we had agricultural, uh, day at the State House, uh, two weeks ago. There was two kids that came and visited me. I talked to them for a while, and I asked them, they go to Norfolk Aggie, which is a great institution, but it is also very expensive, uh, for towns to foot the transportation bill. And there's a movement afoot to try to see if we can create, uh, an agricultural school or an agricultural co-op, um, for high school students that they could take advantage of and that towns may not then be on the hook for, uh, massive education, uh, transportation bills. And, uh, that's another thing that I would like to see the surplus money used for. Um, so those are just, um, a few thoughts, I guess. There was one other.
Thank you very much.
Um, last thing I'll say, unless anyone has any questions, is that there's been, as you guys have probably read about and listened to, whatever, uh, a lot of news over the last two years has been the budget surpluses. Um, I kind of referenced it in the 30 consecutive months of revenue collection. Um, but, you know, there's been provisions in tax law that have come into play, like 62-F, which provided for rebate to taxpayers if after three consecutive fiscal years there was a budget surplus, money has to go back into, uh, to the, to the people who are paying the bills, regular citizens. Um, there are some changes being proposed to that that I don't like. Um, the cert tax in particular, of the 4% on incomes over a million, does, is being taken out of qualification for that. Uh, but one of the things that I'm hoping Massachusetts will do is try to make itself more economically competitive with other states. I've had a lot of people leave in the last several months. Um, you know, we've lost over 100,000 residents, and on a long-term basis, that's really concerning, uh, for anybody's economy. And it's a trend that has continued into 2023, according to Mass Inc. And, um, you know, one of the things that I'm hoping we will do, last week, the, um, House took up tax reform, and they made some, I would say, proposals and then passed, uh, what will hopefully make Massachusetts a little bit more economically competitive with tax reform. Um, you know, they, they went after, uh, childcare tax deductions, um, they went after dependent tax deductions for, you know, families taking care of aging parents, um, they increased rental tax deductions, um, increased the property tax deduction for seniors, veterans, um, they increased the estate tax, um, you know, but Massachusetts still on a rank of, um, other states in New England is not as competitive as we could be. We learned the short-term capital gains tax, um, and long-term. So that, that's a big focus for me, and, uh, making sure that we become as affordable both for residents and businesses as possible, because that's what the future is going to be about our competitiveness. So I figure I just mentioned that.
Great, thank you. All right, Senator Fatman, I don't think anyone else has any more questions, so thank you so much for joining us this evening, and good luck with your pet.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good night. Um, okay, so we're gonna take things a little bit out of order. There is a request by someone who has to pick up a child. I have been in that position. So we will take, we'll skip down to New Business 3I, Annual Town Meeting with the Moderator.
Not as exciting as a dog, but it's a child, so.
What you gotta do, right?
Ella is very excited.
Um, yeah, thank you, you know, to the Board of Selectmen, for everybody here. Just wanted to touch base with a few reminders as we're approaching in two weeks, um, the Annual Town Meeting. A lot of work goes into it, so just want to make sure, um, everybody's kind of up to speed with what to expect. Anybody new who's attending, make sure you understand. So the Annual Town Meeting, um, is a requirement for the town. It'll be held on Monday, May 8th, at 7:00 PM at the Millville Elementary School. We like to begin, uh, the actual meeting at 7:00 PM, so we ask that you arrive a little bit early. I have to do a process of check-in with the clerk's office, so make sure you arrive early so that you can get yourself checked in and get in your seat, and we'll start right at 7:00 when we have a forum. Um, there's a warrant that lists the articles that we'll be voting on. There are 20 articles to vote. You'll notice the warrant actually goes up to 21. It's just a typo. Um, the, the paper that you're gonna look at and see, uh, it's not missing an article, it was just a misnumbering, so I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. Um, and please be sure to read the article, the warrant, ahead of time. It's posted on the town's website. Um, that way there you can be familiar with the articles. Again, there's 20 articles, it'll take a while to get through Monday night, so, um, any advanced preparation that citizens can have, uh, before showing up on Monday, May 8th, is helpful. I would encourage everybody to watch or attend, um, the Finance Committee's Budget Public Hearing, which I'm told will be held next Thursday, May 4th, at 7:00 PM here, and it'll also be recorded and broadcasted. That'll get people really up to speed with the budget. That's the largest, uh, you know, article, um, financial implications, so please be sure to attend or watch that, so you really understand the components of the budget. There'll also, uh, any other financial articles as well they would weigh in on, so that's a really good thing to, uh, read up on. Kind of just a reminder of how procedure works at Annual Town Meeting, a motion will be made and seconded. Uh, the person who makes the motion will then get three minutes to explain and discuss the article, tell you why, why it's important, why we're voting on it, kind of what it means, what the implications are. Any resident who wishes to speak, um, can raise their hand and get recognized for up to three minutes to ask a question or get clarification. But please, again, be sure you're prepared. This is not the time to be asking, "What does this mean?" Um, there are meetings that are held in advance, the warrant is available, so to move the meeting along, it's really helpful if you understand, um, but certainly you can have your time on the floor to ask questions. Um, I also wanted to call out, there is no special town meeting ahead of it. Uh, sometimes in years past, there's a 6:30 special meeting, uh, in which we have to wrap up business from this fiscal year. I'm told that is not the case for this year, so you can arrive early, but there won't be anything acted on prior to the 7:00 PM meeting. Um, handout some materials will be made available. I wanted to double-check with Peter, as long as we get them to me, emailed to me, moderator@millvilmass.org, um, by next Friday, May 5th, at 5:00 PM. I'll review over the weekend. Peter and, and the incredible staff here will get them printed and brought. I've spoken with Dr. DeFalco, um, school committee people who are here, um, they're preparing a booklet as well, so, um, they usually do, and it's usually really informative and helpful, so I will review that with them, um, offline. It's not something that's usually emailed in, so we're good on that front. Um, and then the only other thing I wanted to mention is that I am the appointing authority for both the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee. At this time, there are vacancies on both. Um, these are very important boards, um, it, it really informs town meeting, it informs and makes recommendations for how our town spends their money. Um, and if anybody has any interest in being on, uh, serving on either of those boards, I would strongly encourage you to reach out, um, moderator@millvilmass.org, or certainly get in touch with Peter. He'll get you in touch with me. Um, we are in desperate need of volunteers, there's people rolling off of Finance Committee, uh, June 30th, and so that'll be even more vacancies, and it's really important that we have those positions filled and we have people who are willing to serve in those capacities. That was all I had. Um, if there's any, anything I missed, Peter?
No, you covered nicely. You even found that typo. Which the town clerk didn't find, I asked her to review it.
Sorry, I pushed that off.
I was just worried that we had dropped an article somewhere in the mix.
I missed it too, and like, we've looked at the warrant like a million times, too, we didn't catch it either. It was just, there's no 17.
Yep, no 17, we'll skip right through it. Um, totally fine. Anything else from the board, or anybody, I guess?
Yes, the only thing I would add for the Capital Planning and Finance Committee is their schedule is flexible, like you set when your next meeting is. So it's, like, I started, after the TA Search Committee, where we found our wonderful town administrator, I was in on capital planning, and you could, it's really at the convenience of everyone on that committee, and same for the Finance Committee. So if you're like, thinking, "Oh, I have this rigid schedule and I have to," it's not really rigid, it's quite flexible, so you can really fit it into your, um, into your schedule. And then for both the Capital Planning and the Finance Committee, um, and I, you know, point to when Aubrey Bono was first on the Finance Committee, like, there's a really strong foundation there, so we're in kind of management of the budget now, and it's, you know, we have a good way of moving things forward, so it's not as challenging as it was maybe four or five years ago, kind of.
Yep.
And same thing with capital planning, there's a solid plan in place, a good foundation, where we make adjustments and trade-offs and pull things in because things aged, got aged faster than we anticipated, or we can push things out because they're lasting a little longer, so.
And I think, too, it speaks to, there's been some consistency with town administrator and with the board. Um, you know, a couple of selectmen that have been here for several years at this point now, so really having some of the same, you know, people seeing things through often makes the process easier. It's not, and that's, you know, speaks to staggered terms and making sure that, um, you know, there is continuity within, uh, the boards and everything, so, yeah.
Anything else? Any questions for the moderator? Okay, thank you, Jackie.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we'll go back up to New Business 3C, so Budget Review with BBT.
BBT.
BBT, yes.
Well, first of all, thank you for, you know, especially folks in the Finance Committee as well, uh, for making this a joint meeting. As you know, that, uh, we've got a gentleman to my right here who's been your school superintendent for BBT for, I think, 29 years now?
31.
31, 31 years. And, uh, he has quite a, quite a task with 13 communities that he has to go to with all the Finance Committee and all the different folks he has to meet in those 13 cities and towns. So with that, um, if you haven't met, this is Dr. Michael Fitzpatrick, I know you're new Matt, right? I think, Roland, I think you probably know him from your past tenure and that, and I believe everybody else has pretty much met him at some point in time, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, let's get right down to business then. Um, we're gonna use the board up there for everybody to see, so you can follow along with this. Um, and we're gonna start off by taking a look.
Jerry, before you go through, I just, we're trying to keep the budget moving along, so I'm gonna give you 20 minutes.
Um, again, I appreciate that, and I'll move as fast as I can to keep it going, but I'm sure there'll be some.
If there's plus or minus a little bit, that's okay.
Okay, here we go. Uh, the first part here is, we want to talk about, uh, when hands and minds work together, amazing things can happen. And the thing I want to point out is, we've got some pretty damn good statistics here to go over with you folks. Our commitment is to be measurable, cost-effective, and to be, uh, consistent, that's the key point. Uh, so the request that we have tonight, which is right here, this will be the total BBT Millville request with that, uh, FY '24 is $12,378. That's a 3.97% increase in the request of new monies versus last year. Students, let's take a look at the FY '23 student enrollment. Uh, that student enrollment was, uh, 26 students, it's minus one versus what it was previously at 27. Uh, there is no LPN students this year, there was the year prior. Uh, BMR, uh, and why is this important? Why is this important on the BMR part of it? Well, first of all, you realize that the BMR part of it is where we get our, uh, of students from. So the amount of enrollment in BMR has a direct effect on the amount of students that we have, uh, available to us to be able to put into the enrollment process. What I do is I've, I've taken an eighth grade enrollment, and I've used it from 17 through, uh, the current one of 22, 23, and this year will then indicate to you what the differences have been. In, in all fairness, um, we're, we're not alone in this. The entire state of Massachusetts, according to D E S E, the numerics on that is that it's 4.5% less students this year than was the year before. So there's a tendency overall for all that to be, uh, quite different. Uh, but there's a difference here, as you can see where it was in, uh, 17 and 18, and where it is now, uh, down the bottom there. So that, that becomes rather problematic for us, we're trying to pick, trying to pick more students. Uh, the next one we're gonna look at is, if any questions here, just pop up, okay? Even though we'll work with that 20 minutes, uh, we'll try to make it work. Okay, um, Millville cost per student, this includes now, understand carefully, tuition, transportation, all-state unfunded mandates, remember that favor, Roland?
Yep.
Capital requests, of which there's none this year, Doc?
Zero.
Uh, so there's no capital request, debt and the OPEB contributions, which we've doubled this year. Um, and we've matched that, uh, with the teachers. In FY 2023, the approved 311,000, uh, 651 divided by the 27 students, because some people like to look at what it is per student, and it does give you at least a measurement. Um, 11,543 per student per year, 2024, request 324, oh, 29, that's the 12 grand I just talked about. You've got 26 students in that, net-net on that comes out to be 12,463 per student per year. That's a $920 increase per student per contact, contract year, and our contract year runs 195 days. Uh, you divide that out, it's $4.71 per day, um, is what are the increased costs that we're asking for. Six years, uh, number four here, this is kind of important, six years BBT budget increases and decreases. In years where you have, um, more students than less, uh, you have these effects of where your budget does change. Net-net, FY '19, 52, uh, 52,393, that's what happened in '19. FY '20 was minus 34,000, FY '21, minus 29. Um, FY '22 was plus 31, FY '23 was minus, that was last year, 51,781, and this year asking for the 12, 30, uh, 12,378 average increase. Now, if you take, you can't take a snapshot because of the way these things gyrate according to the state, uh, function. When you look at this, so we take an average over six years, which is a much better way of looking at something over time. Over the six years, Millville has been asked to pay a minus $18,447, a 16% decrease. I think BBT has done its part to try to keep the cost down as low as possible, and this definitely improves it. Now, I'll take a look at contact teaching days in 19, I'd say, 183, that's the state's longest. When you look at a budget, the state requires 180 contact teaching. I won't talk about going down the Cape for half-day meetings or whatever, contact teaching in front of the kids. The contact teaching days on that is 193. That's the state's longest, been that way for 15 years, and that's probably why we get the results we get, because of the extra time, uh, in contact with the kids. Um, so if you take that out, it comes out to be 324, which you talked about, 64,57 per day, uh, per student. Last year's cost was $60, so it's an increase here of $4.57 per day per student, including tuition, transportation, all-state mandates, capital, uh, debt, and OPEB contributions, which is this line here. Number six, state minimum contribution. Now, here's, where you need to understand this, FY '22, the state said, "You, Millville, have to pay 269,100." That's the minimum contribution that the state requires us to pay. And FY '23, there was a decrease of 38,000, so that came out at 230,539. This year, FY '24, you're at 233,297. That's an increase of $2,758, 1.2%. Now, the reason I mention this is because the total combined all-member assets, uh, excuse me, assessments sustained a 6.71% increase over the prior year, which is then driven by a 4.27% escalation, state-mandated minimums. We're nothing new with that, that's the state says, that's what the minimum's gonna be for all 13 towns of which I represent. Combined, the state BBT is requesting for Millville an increase of 12,378, or 3.97%. That was the total I told you about to begin with, right here. Millville's increase is made up of two parts, as is all towns. It's made up of the state mandate of $2,758, and the and fifty-eight dollars, and the request from BBT, that's not state mandated monies, is nine thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. That's right here. If you take the nine thousand six hundred and twenty dollars, add it to the state have to pay at Millville, twenty-seven fifty-eight, the BBT request without the state mandate is three point zero eight percent increase of new dollars asked. Per pupil assessment cost is second lowest. I'm pretty proud of this. This has been, we've either been the lowest or the second lowest of all the other twelve-member communities. Remember, it's thirteen communities in total here for the, for the Volk School. District average with the debt, everything inclusive, same, same comparisons, fourteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars per student. Millville's assessment is twelve thousand four sixty-two per student, or twenty-four hundred and nine dollars, sixteen point two percent less than the district average. Milford is the lowest, if you wish to know, at ten thousand four sixty-eight per student, to the highest is Sutton at eighteen thousand two forty-three. So you can see the wide differences here between that. But again, Millville is about sixteen and a half percent less than the regular, regular district. Okay, let's go if I can do this correctly. Boom. All right. Why didn't that move? Did that move?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Aaron?
Jerry.
Just curious.
Yeah.
You're comparing Millville to all these other towns. Could you share their enrollment with us?
Did I share what?
Can you share their enrollment with us? I, like Sutton, Milford.
How many students?
Are they funding?
I don't have that precise information with me. I think, Doc, you would have it there, would you not?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Millville owns two point one percent of the total operation. There are twelve hundred and forty-four students. The booklets that have been provided in advance to the finance committee and to the select persons identify the enrollment per town. So.
Where do we stand? Where does Millville stand in that?
Stand in terms of total students?
It has the fewest students as one of the smallest towns.
Twenty-six students.
I heard you say twenty-six.
Yeah, it's twenty-six students.
Twenty-six students.
Two percent of the total budget. Okay? If you got any question, that's a good question. So any questions you got, just ask. All right. Let's go back over. So any questions so far? Anything, Andrew? Anybody got a question at all?
So for the increase for this year, what's the major factors for that?
Major factors for the increase?
Yes.
Doc, you want to handle that?
Three primary factors drove the budget, okay? They would be increased safety, increased technology, and increased utility cost.
What's increased safety?
Safety for the campus, okay? Increased security people to be in the building all, all full-time. That's new staff.
Okay. And then, what was the last one you said?
Utilities.
I said utility costs are the three major increases that drive the twelve thousand three hundred and seventy-eight new dollars that we ask of the town. All these numbers are provided in advance to the town administrator.
And I think all of you have received, I hope, the, the budget, correct? Everybody received, at least, you got different copies. Then when these two gentlemen came on board, I gave them this copy. So they all should have it in their dossier on that.
That answer your question now?
Yep. Yeah, the one that was kind of a difficult increase, we really debated it a lot, Andrew, was the utilities. There were some, there were some real concerns on some of the costs of that. But again, I think I heard the other night from the finance committee, there's concerns everywhere on the, on the utilities.
It's throughout the budget.
Yeah, it really did.
We were able to provide a zero increase for capital by controlling that totally through grants. In fact, totally some three million dollars in grants. So we didn't ask the towns for that money.
Any other questions? Anybody? Having seen none, move on. Number eight, operating ownership decrease due to one less student from point zero two one six zero to point two zero, uh, zero two oh nine oh. We can all understand that, it's just a division. Enrollment at BBT, number nine, enrollment at BBT is increased from eight hundred and sixteen students, and this is in two thousand and two, to one thousand two hundred and forty-four students in FY twenty-three, twenty-four. That's an increase of four hundred and twenty-eight new students, a fifty-two percent increase in total. This year, the eight hundred and twenty-nine district-wide students applied for, now, this is important, eight hundred and twenty-nine district-wide students applied for three hundred and nineteen freshman seats. So it's about two point seven percent for one, is what it comes out to in terms of district-wide student applications versus the three hundred, we wish they could take all three, eight twenty-nine. We can't, it's three hundred and nineteen. Enrollment status of twelve, a hundred and forty-four students is as of October first, twenty twenty-two. Freshmen, there's three hundred and ten, sophomores, three twelve, juniors, three thirteen, seniors, two ninety-five, and eleven LPN choice. Notes, state staffing retention report, this is a report, a new report that came out, which we were kind of interested in. This is on number ten. And, let's see, the state staffing retention report released by D E shows, BBT is second at ninety-four point two percent. When compared to the other twelve academic systems, Sutton has the highest at ninety-eight percent rating. That's a retention report. Why is that important? When you have skilled people that are in there that are teaching these youngsters, and you have to have, you have high rates of turnover, it's very costly. So you want to keep that retention rate, and we do, we work very, very well with our, with our unions, so that we can make sure that we keep that type of retention rate. If you want to move on, we'll move to, let's see, number ten. This is the seventeenth year, the BBT release monies from E and D, that's excess and deficiency. This year, a hundred thousand dollars offset the member assessments based on operating ratios. We said the operating ratio for Millville is point zero two zero nine, nine oh, I should say. So it's a two thousand dollar offset, using a hundred thousand dollars as the base. Any questions on that? Having seen none, move on to eleven. As of January twenty-fourth, BBT, and this is something I think, that I'm pretty, more than pretty proud of, we're very proud of, BBT secured thirty-one competitive grants, federal grants, state grants, external funding, and donations totaling two million three hundred ninety-four thousand two hundred forty-three. That's eight point two percent of the entire budget. There are six federal grants totaling five hundred ninety-two, six competitive grants for fourteen grand, federal state grants totaling one million seven, and eleven donations totaling seventy-two thousand three twenty-three. But the good news on this is that they're still, and Doc, unless you have anything new on this, they are still pending nine additional applied-for grants. And those future grants are totaling another six hundred and twenty-three thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars. That'll get us to what we always try to target in on, on an annual basis, about a ten percent grants versus budget total. That'll complement the local tax dollars or adding new resources. BBT continues to do the team approach to secure cost avoidance assets through external funding opportunities offered by state and other sources. Any questions on the financials of that at all? So basically, you've got a twelve thousand dollar ask, you've got a nine thousand dollars from BBT, and three thousand dollars from the state. So that's the total of what you have seen here, and the numbers of which I've given you. Any questions whatsoever?
Well, just as the budget meister here for Millville, what I look at, Jerry, is, I appreciate all that you're saying, all of the ways you get grants to offset costs and all of that. But what I really look at is, I take away the debt, because debt is debt, although you do reduce it by having grants to pay for things that otherwise would be capital or generate debt. But I just look at the operating costs, and I look at the cost per student, and I look at the increase. And when I look at the cost per student, I look at an eight point three percent increase over last year, per student. And that's hard, you know, so then I start to scratch my head and say, how can that be sustained in a proposition two-and-a-half environment? I appreciate you have a minimum local contribution, but for me, that means less. What, what means is what's, what's the cost? And what's the cost for the, you have six percent operating costs or expenses in your budget, that's an increase overall for all those things, which Doc explained the three driving factors here. I get that. But at the end of the day, you know, this gets tougher and tougher to deal with, when you're dealing with an operating cost increase of eight point three percent. I just want to express that as my view of this right now. That, those are the numbers that really matter to me. All that is interesting, but what matters is the operating cost per student and the increase related to that.
How significant would it be that we were asking for twelve thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars more than a year ago, and have a long-term trend of a reduced assessment?
Well, those trends vary. So you could have, you could have added twelve students. I'd still be interested in the cost per student, right? Because we can't control, you control your admissions, the number of students. And yes, you, we've benefited by the fluctuation, the trend that, I forget which number of those you had up there, but you showed, going back, number of students, and it went up, and went down, and up, and went down. Here we are, we got twenty-six students that we're dealing with. And what's the cost per student? Versus last year's twenty-seven students, versus the year before's twenty-nine. So yes, I appreciate that it, it goes up and down. But that's why I beat in on that one metric, which to me is the most important.
Yeah, and it's appropriate to dig in. One of the questions that you raised with Senator Fatman, or the group did, was the predictions relative to state revenues. Okay, because Valley Tech meets a higher expectation and makes this additional investment, it didn't receive thirty dollars a student even in the first allocation. It received four hundred and eighty-eight dollars a student. We're glad to see the change in basic chapter seventy, which the senator made reference to. Two weeks ago, the House of Representatives moves the thirty dollars a student to sixty, and there's new petitions to change it to a hundred dollars a student. But Valley Tech, which has a higher per student cost by its design, by its expectation, by the standards that we need to meet, as a result of that, that's what made us eligible to get the three million dollars in grants and the four hundred and eighty-eight dollars, okay, in chapter seventy. These are only attributable, we're eligible for these because we meet this higher standard. So there's a direct correlation between the revenue that the state makes Millville eligible for, and how many dollars it invests for students in its vocational technical school.
Do I help?
No, those are all valid points, for sure. We're still dealing with, we got a pie, we got a one-size-pie, and we got to pull away some part of the pie from somewhere else, that's all. We, we, we deal with that in other budgets, too.
Yeah.
Well, as, as, Millville has enjoyed the, the second lowest rate per student, per student cost, and, and traditionally the first before the state recalculated the demographics of Milford, okay? Although Milford has agreed, through its finance committee, one of the presentations that was made before tonight, to consider making a special donation over and above its assessment, because it has that reduction. In the other presentations of the towns, there's been no criticism of the lower assessment rate paid, paid by Millville. In fact, there's been no rejections across the budget presentations so far throughout the district. I hope that continues.
Anybody else? Anybody else have a question? We want to keep Jen moving. Anybody else who have any questions? Seeing none, none. Let's move on real quick.
One minute left, so.
No, we're not going to make it one minute, so you're going to have to give me a little bit of wiggle on this.
But is this, this doesn't look like budget stuff, though.
It is budget stuff, because this is what, the one thing to say a budget, there's another thing to say what was the result of what took place.
Okay, give me your top three.
Okay, I'm going to give you the first one. BBT students proved that their technical skills earned a hundred and seventy-six medals in the national level. I think that's sufficient to say the rest you can read there. The national level is one that, that, that's state, district, and national level, excuse me, a hundred and seventy-six medals. The entire class of twenty LPN nursing graduated, all of them graduated. BBT ranked number three in Massachusetts by the Mass Practical Nursing, that's a college rank. And by the way, we also, because of the licensing agreement, we checked that, there's a hundred and thirty-nine graduates, a hundred and thirty of them, ninety-four percent are now employed, which I think is a credit to the, to the credentialing. Millville celebrates eleven of twenty-seven students who were also on the GPA eighty-eight percent or above, above on technical, related, or academic courses. The Galspeople, Myra DeShanty, Logan Humphries, I'm not going to mention all the kids' names, but there are a raft of them up there you can see, and the first trimester standings. According to Mass DESE, the four-year graduation rate, and this stuff is very important when it comes to two point four, right up here. Mass graduation rate at BBT for twenty-twenty-two was ninety-nine point seven, compared to state average eighty-nine point eight. The dropout rate at BBT was zero, compared to state average of four point eight. The class of twenty-twenty-two produced two hundred and ninety-seven graduates and had a renewal value of over ten million dollars. We have celebrated ninety-two top senior scholars for the John and Abigail Adams Report. I understand.
We can read them.
I'm just, I'm just about there, Jen, I can feel it. MCAS testing, this is the next-gen MCAS test. This test indeed comes down to the class of twenty-twenty-four, so ninety-nine percent of all tests is earned in competency determination. That is in the class of twenty-twenty-four, competency determination, science, hundred percent of all students in English language arts, and ninety-six percent in math. And see, and a hundred percent of all students, let's see, were determined to be graduating classes competency determined. That's a requirement before you can, you can move out. BBT ranked number one in math, sixty-one points, when compared to the twenty-eight other sister vocational agricultural schools. State average was fifty, BBT was sixty-one, ranked number one when compared with eleven member local academic systems as well. BBT ranked number two, fifty-seven points in English language arts, behind Essex Aggie. And they had sixty points when compared to the other twenty-eight sister vocational, educational schools, and number two, fifty-seven points when compared to eleven member local academic systems. Hope Deal had sixty-four, I know you were asking, Jen, and the state average was fifty points. So those are, those are some of the points that I think become critical as to what have you invested in, and what have, kind of results have you got? BBT ranked number one, five hundred and ten points in science, biology, physics, when compared to the other twenty-eight vocag schools, and also ranked number one when compared to eleven member local academic systems. The state average was four hundred and ninety-nine. That's right up here. Of the total two hundred and ninety-seven graduates, and this is kind of an important thing, we grant-funded because people were saying, well, their kids don't use their education to be able to go on to their own thing that they went to school for. Well, we went and we, we had a grant-funded five-year, two sixteen, two twenty-one look-back, and the graduate survey demonstrated fifty-six percent of the students tracked, responded that BBT technical training was directly related to the current employment. I think that's an important factor. Cooperative education placement, this year was a record one hundred and thirty-six seniors, that's forty-seven percent of the class placement. They did fifty-five thousand hours, and they worked, that totaled eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in combined compensation, and thirteen students signed actual contracts on career day. And Pete, because I know you like math, that comes out to be fourteen dollars and eighty-one cents per hour for the kids. BBT is an active four-hundred-member advisory council, that's what I think is important with twenty trades. DESD did also a five-year study of special education. We've been asked a number of times about this question. We had a special education determination of individual disabilities education act called IDEA, and received a MEETS requirement from the state. In fact, the students with disabilities accounted for ten point six percent of the population, students with high needs, nineteen point three, and economically disadvantaged, ten point four. So of the total, five hundred and one students met within these three categories, or forty point three percent of our total population. Updated report just got in, the DESE confirmed now our special needs are up to twenty-four percent for the five oh four plans. Blackstone Valley Tech was sitting in the national, this is the last one, Jen, I promise, the, the National Distinguished School Award for STEM and Career Learning Programming through the PLTW, that's Project Lead the Way. And that's important because Project Lead the Way is a non-profitization whose curriculum empowers students develop and apply in-demand, transferable skills by exploring real-world challenges and pathways, includes computer science, engineering, robotics, and biomedical, to name a few. Students are not only challenged, but they're also learned to act and think critically. Now, this is important because this is BBT's fifth consecutive year.
With all due respect, you've gone past three at this point, it's.
I know, but I got this last one, and I'll be all set, Andrew.
You said that twice already.
I'm all set right here, Andrew, I say. This is BBT's fifth consecutive year, winning this award of five, Pete. Only school in New England to earn this award five years in a row, and only one of thirty-five schools in the United States. Those are some of the factors of what you pay for. Those are some of the things of which the citizens of Millville have a right to be proud of, in, of the other twelve other towns that also participate. Any questions? Andrew, got any questions?
No, I fear it would take too long for you to answer.
Oh, that was an awful, uncompromising thing. This is a very important presentation. And yet you seem to be ridiculing. It seems to be rather odd way to, for a professional person to answer, but.
I wouldn't go with that. I wouldn't go there, if I were you.
I'll pass on it, so you'll be all set. Anybody else have any questions, anything? Having seen none? Doc, any last comments? You all said, you think you're over time, right?
No, I understand that. To be fair to other presenters.
Yes, that's, that's exactly why.
That's the most important.
Because we can't have everybody present for twenty-five minutes. Because we can't have everybody present for 25 minutes. So I did, there was one more thing on the agenda, so we get these meeting minutes from the June 16th meeting that Andrew Richard and I attended, and I guess the only, so one, I appreciate that this was resolved, but I guess the only comments I have was that we had to chase for this again, and we had to chase, 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 chase. Whereas if you had just sent this in September, this, we wouldn't be having this conversation now.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry you view it that way. I mean, the, the chair, I believe, indicated that within two working days, he received a request on Thursday, or the district did, and responded to it Monday. Executive minutes are not sent until they are requested, it's a long-term practice. Without knowing there was a request to receive the minutes, they weren't sent.
So I think that that's, this is a little bit different than an executive minutes request. We had someone come to the meeting, drop an F-bomb and flip a bird. I had to approach you, and like, we didn't talk until a week later about what happened. We then asked to go to a meeting, that was another month after that, and then they said you take it under advisement, so I was, when someone, if I were to say I'm taking this under advisement, we would have had follow-up.
I just respect the decision made by the chair and the committee. I work for them.
All they had to do was send this to us months ago.
They have a long-term practice of sending it upon request, and according to what the chair said to me, and he honored that request within two days of the request arriving.
So that's fine, but I just, I would never treat you this way, Dr. Fitzpatrick, ever. I would never treat you this way. If someone, if, I'm gonna use Andrew's example, because he has the same position, if Andrew went to your meeting and was really rude and awful, you would have heard from me and Peter within 16 hours, not even a week. I would have said, here's how we resolved it, I am so sorry, I hope and we can move past this, I would not have treated you this way. And I'm very disappointed with that. I find, find these are the rules, and you don't send anything until it's requested, and so we do this, and may, maybe I'm better at this than other people. I would not have treated you this way. I would have written you a letter, you would have gotten an apology, you would have heard as soon as the decision was made, you would have known what it was.
My recollection is somewhat different, Jen, you, you made a request...
Sure that it is.
Pardon?
I'm sure that it is, like, you're, this is not, like, you're gonna, you're not being truthful.
If I recall, there was a request to have you make a presentation, and there were multiple communications back and forth relative to this, and that request was honored, okay, at the school committee meeting?
Yes.
And, and that presentation was made. The minutes reflect what occurred. I don't control the school committee, I don't even have a vote in that process, I have nothing to do with the minutes, I don't control the minutes. The minutes are controlled by the secretary of the school committee, all right, and, and the chair, who's an attorney by profession, okay, honored the request within two working days of receiving the request. The practice at Valley Tech, from my observation of 31 years and 50 years in this business, is that regular minutes are put on the website and sent, posted in the towns, and I see them posted all over the 13 towns. But executive minutes are not done in that fashion, they're provided, once they are approved and subsequently voted to be released, the two, two actions, they're provided upon request. That has been the practice, and they simply honored it, they didn't treat you differently than they treat any other requestor of information.
That's fine. Had this situation been reversed, you would not have had to chase me, and I would not have treated you this way. You're going, you're looking at a process thing, I'm looking at, how do I wanna, I wanna treat some, how do I wanna be treated, and how would I treat someone else? I would not have treated you this way. I would, you wouldn't have to make a process, a request, and follow everything. I would have said, Dr. Fitzpatrick, I'm really sorry this happened, and here's the outcome that we came to, if you have any other questions, let me know. I wouldn't have had to chase you, we wouldn't, like, yes, we have a process, and if you wanna fall back on, hey, we did exactly what we say the process is, fine, I would have extended more courtesy your way.
As you recollect what occurred, there was a request by you to have you make a presentation to the school committee. That process was honored and put in place.
Yes.
You were treated with the strictest of courtesies to do that. I felt that was a reasonable request, and, and certainly within your jurisdiction, and it was honored. And so you were put on a, a, a school committee in, in record time, well, from the request that was originally made. This is a reflection of what happened, although you were present, you know what happened, so it wouldn't be new information to you at all.
I was looking for the resolution, and a courteous communication on the resolution, which eight months later, it's like, you know, I mean, if this was sent in September, we wouldn't be having any of this conversation right now. That's all you had to do, is, hey, this is our resolution, we did resolve this in, you came to us in June, I see that this was voted on, it looks like in August, and here's the resolution.
Well, I found that honoring the, the direction of the school committee is the best thing for a superintendent to do, and that, I'm simply a servant in that process, okay? We, all right, so you, you...
I'm not disputing that the, that the school committee came to this conclusion, what I'm saying is, as a courtesy, communicating it faster would have been better.
And the school committee has a long-term practice of responding in a manner, okay? And, and you give me more jurisdiction than I hold, okay? I don't direct the school committee.
So you're saying I should talk to the school committee about the gap in the communication and the level of courtesy? Is that what you're saying, like, this should not be directed at you because you're not on the school committee? Is that what I'm hearing?
If you wish to direct or answer the chair of the school committee, who, who I encouraged to make certain that he responded, and he responded within two days of the request, you can certainly convey that, or I'll convey it, whichever your preference is.
So, no, I'm happy to send him an email. I guess if I look at the meeting minutes, it says quite clearly, "Mr. Hall thanks the representatives for bringing the matter to the committee's attention. While it was a severe request, the committee will take the matter under advisement." If I'm telling anyone, anyone here, I'm taking this under advisement, you will get a follow-up for me when, whatever that rev- resolution is. You won't have to chase me for that.
I can convey that to the chair.
So I, no, I'll email him, it's fine, so. And I'm sorry if I was taking, directing this at you, and you're not the appropriate person to direct it to.
That's okay, no, in a sense of, I accept...
No, no, I'm sorry, it sounds like you were not the right person for me to direct this at, so I apologize.
I, I accept that apology, thank you. I'll convey that to the chair. All I'm saying is that my role is somewhat different than the school committee actions, no more than your role is the same as, you know, another body of the town.
So, no, I thank you for the clarification.
If ever something comes up, where you have a question like that, I'm the representative, which all the questions that basically come from Peter or from whomever, are usually filtered through me first, so if there's any type of request like that, come to me first with it, and then I'll either pass it on, if I get your answers, or I'll be able to at least let you know where you can find the answers. This is, I believe, was posted as of August?
Looks like, yeah, it's August, September.
Yeah, well, that's the first date that we had a meeting, of which we were able to...
It was August.
To take it and, and look at this was late August. So that's when we took a look at it and went through the process with it, and the rest of it you can read there as to what the minutes dictate. I, 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 I hear you, you don't need to repeat it, I got it, essence of time, I think I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Rowan. Yes, sir.
Welcome aboard, Doc.
All right, thank you.
Budget review with BMR.
Yeah, that's right. Let me get my, I can take.
Thank you for having us. I'll introduce Dr. DeFalco, our superintendent longstanding, and he will be giving the presentation.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, can you hear me? Well, I guess Tim would tell me if our friends at home can hear, is that right?
If you wanna just, like, maybe angle it a little?
Okay. All right, so thanks so much for having us here this evening. Before I start, and we will work very diligently to respect the time parameters that you've put out this evening for us.
So I, they had 25 minutes before, because they went over, so I have to give you the whole 25 minutes, so it's 7:59, so I'll say 8:25.
We'll see if we can do it in 20.
Okay.
But I'd like to first introduce Denise Carrier, she is our new Director of Finance and Operations. She just started a couple weeks ago, so we will not be making her.
Who is your owner?
We will not have her doing the presentation or, or conversation for this evening, and you know Jill Pilligall-Ronnie, our Director of Learner Support Services. And so this evening's conversation is really almost like a part two for all of you around the table, those that, that joined us for our February 13th meeting, our joint meeting between the Boards of Selectmen and our finance subcommittees and our school committee. So I'm not gonna take the time to go deep into a lot of the, our data points and return on investment and student performance and grad rates and all those other things, we've gone, we've been through that, we did that in February. But I do wanna just highlight a few things before we jump into the numbers specifically, and talk a little bit about the process. This year, like all of you and our colleagues who just presented, the budget process was a little bit different, just from the sheer fact that the governor is new and had additional time to put the, her budget together, which we know impacted all of us. So you do not have your budget books in front of you, because the school committee has been diligently working with our leadership team around getting our assessments to a place that does not impact the learning in a negative way, and, and minimizes any impact in the classroom, but also puts forward a budget, the, the best budget we can, that also would be able to be supported by the towns. And so in a moment, we'll delve into those numbers, but our process this year, although not hugely different, was slightly delayed just by, you know, waiting for the governor to release our numbers. And so we certainly understand that. In tonight's discussion, you will see a budget that is really reflecting, reflecting our district improvement strategy, which we are in Blueprint 2.0, not very creative, but is our second version of our strategic plan that we're very proud of, but it's still focused on the what, the how, the whole child, the community, meaning specifically our curriculum materials, resources, our instructional kind of teaching and learning structures that we have in place, those non-academic barriers that get in the way of learning for students and trying to reduce and minimize those, and then of course, bringing the community together around the schools. So we're staying very anchored in those four areas of our strategic planning and implementation work. A new piece this year that we're really excited about, that our high school has done a great job around, which is our portrait of a graduate, and really developing those five Cs, and those five Cs are our commitment, the school district's commitment to our two towns and what you can expect the qualities of all of our graduates to, to possess, and that is character, citizenship, collaboration, communication, and critical thinking. I think something that really sets us apart, and I do just wanna quickly underscore this, is that we have taken those five attributes, and we have actually developed a rubric for what those look like and sound like, not only at the high school, but we've backed that all the way down to Millville Elementary. So if you have a conversation with our preschool teachers or kindergarten teachers, they can tell you what critical thinking means, what it looks like and sounds like in kindergarten. So we have taken those five Cs and have developed very deeply a sense of ownership and belonging in those areas down to our youngest learners, and across the entire district with that. We know that district doesn't start at the high school level, and so we have to make sure that that commitment begins right away. And so what is in this year's budget? Just some very high level, again, on February 13th, we delve deep into this, but just to give our friends at home a quick sense, again, we are in year two of our strategic plan, our Blueprint 2.0, so we have very specific goals and objectives that are anchored to our budget, right? Our fiscal plan must support our strategic plan, so we've done a lot of work in that space to make sure there's a direct connection and return on investment to the towns. Very specifically, we have put in place some additional supports, and continued supports for intervention for English and math K through 8. We sat in front of this group, you may recall, gosh, 2020, 2021, when ESER money was coming into the district, and we made a commitment that those dollars that we were using for positions would not turn into forever positions. We had some conversations about some worries about these positions and these interventionists and additional counselors and things being rolled into a, the district general budget, and we've held to that. So the positions that we have put forward through our ESER dollars, we've committed to off, essentially kind of offloading some of those positions as the ESER money has sunset. And so we are holding true to that, but we are still keeping in place the opportunity to provide intervention to our, our students' grades K through 8 in English and math. So that is being supported in this year's budget. At the high school level, our career focus has remained strong, and we are continuing to work on our career pathways through our high school. Our BVXL, which is the program that we've put in place across the 13 communities in the Blackstone Valley that our career focus, so, and any given semester, we could have upwards of five to 10 students participating in courses like virtual welding, manufacturing, cybersecurity. This year, we've had 19 students participating in our career pathways through our BVXL program. That's in addition to the school-embedded pathways that we have, like biomedicine. So we're very proud of that, and that focus remains very much a point of our budget for this year. We are really pleased, Thursday evening, our social studies curriculum committee will be presenting to our school committee, they've finished a year-long study, and will be looking to move forward with a new social studies program, K through 8 for next year. I highlight that, and I'm smiling about it, not only because it's such a great opportunity for our kids, but that actually completes a full complement of all of our core academic programming for our kids. All students in BMR next year will have a full, complete, cutting-edge program as far as curriculum is concerned, materials, resources, and the teachers will have this at their fingertips for English, math, science, and social studies. And we are starting next year on reviewing and refining our, our science again. So this cycle that we committed to five years ago is very solidly in place, and we're very, very grateful for the financial investments that everybody has made in that, to making sure that our students and teachers have the best materials in their hands. Additionally, we're seeing, which we're really, really excited about, a large increase in our English language learner population. And so while we haven't, you will not see an increase in our budget in terms of additional asks for positions, instead, we do what we have always done, which is how do we shift this dollar from here to there and try to reuse and repurpose before we ask for anything new or additional? And so in, through working with our budget, we are shifting our focus to our English language learners, as well as we're seeing a large increase in our population there. Some of the factors, again, we talked about this in our meeting in February, that are driving our budget, obviously, health insurance increases, special education tuition increases, utility costs, like everybody else, we are underneath those restraints, constraints as well, and our increase in minimum local contribution. We had forecasted, we thought would be fairly significant, and again, it is. This year, the Millville increase in, in the state-assigned local contribution has gone up over 5% again. And so with that, I just want to segue briefly into the numbers to give a sense of where we are. And your packets, I think you have two handouts from BMR. The first is titled, "Blackstone Millville Regional School District FY23-24 Comparison." It's that, it's a table that looks like this?
Yes.
Just to give everybody a sense. And so what we did was put together just a very brief data table for you to get a sense of FY23, where we stood as far as our four category areas, which is our state-assigned minimum local contribution, our exclusionary, which is our transportation costs, the additional, which is what the district needs above and beyond, the MLC, and then the capital costs. So you can see on our table where we stood in FY23, and where we're looking to go in FY24, and then the difference in the overall dollar amounts. So you'll see that the minimum local contribution that is assigned by the state is up by $138,960. The exclusionary, which is our transportation costs, those are actually down, $25,000. The additional is up $150,961. And then your capital costs, our capital assessments are actually down seven, just over $17,000. I think an important number to highlight, the district operating costs, and Peter, you were referencing this a little bit earlier, our operating costs are up 3%, and then the additional increases have come from the MLC, charter sending, school choice sending. The school committee has worked very hard to try and offset the best we can, the assessments by looking at two different levers. The first is increasing revenues, the second is decreasing and reducing expenditures. And so just some highlights from the last time we spoke about this, we have been able to increase our use of E and D, which will, if you look at the second sheet, that is titled "The Preliminary Revenues and Assessments," looking at the column all the way to the left, you will see the charter school sending, you'll see the school choice sending, and then the operating costs is the all other. If you look just below that, you'll see the ESER III rollover dollars, so we have a total of about $430,000 that we're gonna apply to offset the assessments. You'll see the use of excess and deficiency at about $500,000, and then you will see the state revenues, and I certainly won't read all of these to you, but I do wanna bring your attention to the bottom, which is circuit breaker. But I do want to bring your attention to the bottom, which is circuit breaker and the use of $880,000 in circuit breaker dollars to help offset assessments. I will share with you very candidly that when we are audited each year, our auditor requests and the Department of Education requests that we do not build these into our budget. These are additional revenues that are not supposed to be used to help offset assessments in the manner in which we present them. We continue to take the feedback but not make the change. And that is because we are trying as hard as humanly possible to help offset the costs to the towns. Underneath that, you will see that we also use additional fees and tuitions at the tune of $469,000. Those are gate fees, those are classroom use fees, Medicaid. Again, we've been asked repeatedly to please stop including these in our budget as offsets. And again, we continue to put them in because we are trying to give you a number that is as responsible of a number as possible. And then lastly, that's not included in here, but at our February 13th meeting, we had a lot of conversation about our grants. The district has written over $2 million in grants. We do not have a grant writer. We all pick up a piece of that, myself, Jill, our principals, and work diligently to try to, again, write for additional programming opportunities for kids, curriculum offsets, assessment offsets, to try to get our number to a manageable place. This year, we are leaving six positions vacant. These are through a couple of different ways. We had a couple of positions that were added in November that were in STEM and foreign language. Very unfortunately, after lots of recruiting and interviewing, we just can't find qualified individuals to put in front of our children. I think you know, our team, having gone almost a year without a finance director, we won't just put anybody in a position. We will leave it vacant and pick up the work.
But you still budget for those positions, or you haven't budgeted?
We took them out.
They're out of the budget. Okay, thank you.
So those six positions are not reflected in the budget.
And then, so that's accurately the 114 numbers of teachers that you have right now, that include, that's how many?
So now there's six less.
Six less than that.
Okay, so it's one of those.
Yep. And in our enrollment, so what, if you're looking at a Department of Education profile page, you'll probably see a number of like 14, 58, 14, 60.
14, 60 is what you sent me on March 15th.
Yep. So we are now at 15, 21, which is great. But our budget is actually built on our October enrollment, which is on the 14 number. So, but our staffing patterns have to reflect the budget that the student enrollment is built upon, which is the 14, 60. So if you're just kind of wondering how those pieces kind of fit together.
Yes.
And I want to be clear, none of these positions are classroom teacher positions. So there's no concern about class sizes or anything of that nature. We're still around the 22 at the elementary level.
That does impact the ratios, though, right?
It will, yes. When the Department of Ed catches up to us, which will be in October, when they get our staff and our student enrollment numbers, then those numbers will shift.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, what it will look like is, it will look like the student-to-teacher ratio is higher as far as class size, because we'll have less. At that point, we will reflect the 15, 20, or whatever the number is at that time. But we'll actually have fewer staff on our books. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So through decreasing operating costs, increasing revenues, that is how we got to the numbers that are in front of you this evening. So let me pause here and see what questions you may have on budget.
Yeah, I guess the only thing, if I take that 15, 21 divided by 108, that puts the ratio at 14.9, which is slightly higher than it was in 2012. But that was one of the things that Peter and I were talking about earlier, so that puts it kind of more in line. So I don't know that.
Yeah, I think we.
You have any place to.
Yeah, I know that.
We've reduced as the enrollment.
Yes, so that was one of the things.
You took those six out. That's part of the.
And then the students went up. So it's like teachers went down, students went up. So now the ratio, it's still a good ratio. But that was one of the things that Peter and I were talking about earlier is that there might be a wiggle room for, you know, eight to 12 less teachers, which weighted and stuff is like $100,000 roughly per teacher. It might be a little bit more. And then that would be $800,000. But that just went out the window completely. So I don't know why I'm talking about it. So, yeah, I don't have any, I don't have.
Just perspective, like, because I've been with Dr. DeFalco a couple of times in this process. I think you, and I'm glad you pointed that out, because the overall operating costs, you're at 3%. I think when we first met, you were 3.8%.
Sure, yeah.
And we got together in February, you had gotten it down to 3.4%. And I joked, you're going to get to three, and you did.
To three, yeah.
Which is good. So that's important. I think what I don't have, and I didn't go back to my, maybe I should, to this, just to get a better sense of the reduction in the state pieces of the puzzle here, you know, the revenues.
Sure.
Because that's really what drives why we're sitting here today with a bigger number than we've been used to the past few years, you know? I have trouble thinking that it's because of the minimum local contribution. But really, those three line items on this page grouped together is really what the cost is that the town has to pay for regardless of how you divvy it up.
Well, and to your point, at the end of the day, where we saw the largest increases, and this is what we were worried about, was we saw charter school sending, we saw school choice sending, we saw reductions in charter school reimbursement, which we knew over time is going to happen, and then we saw the MLC increase. So you really do, when you have those. So if you, you might remember, when we started, our operating increase was around 1.4, 1.5 as far as an increase, and we got that down to 8.44. And so there was, there was a lot of work that went into getting there. And I will say very, I think, kind of boldly, I'm actually way more concerned about FY '25.
Great.
So because of, because of all the things we just discussed, but the charter school reimbursement numbers are going to become lower, that MLC is going to go up. I just want to put it out there.
No, no, it's fair.
You had forewarned us about this year as well. I mean, I think you're pretty upfront about that. You also, I think, the fact that you talked about circuit breaker. Yes, you're being very aggressive. I concur with you being aggressive on that. But because you're anticipating essentially the full boat of circuit breaker, which here in Senator Fatman, maybe there'll be something better than that. But that's not reflected here, which means that might go to your E and D next year or whatever.
Well, it can't go to E and D. Circuit breaker has to stay.
Okay, so just stay there.
And it's only for special education costs.
But I'm also, you must get credit for the fact that you've been operating without a Denise, this whole process, right?
She'll save us next year. There'll be no problems.
So I know you've relied on a whole bunch of folks on your team to get this done, right?
Yep.
It's a lot of work.
I was just doing a little bit of math on this. So we are now contributing, well, the towns, Blackstone and Millville, are contributing 50.3% to the budget, it looks like. And then the state is 49.7%. And I know that we've talked about the state, yeah, where they want to be. Where do they want to, so one, I'm glad that it's not like, they didn't rip the bandaid off and be like, bam, you're contributing everything. But I, it's funny, I used to know this number off the top of my head, but I don't recall it. Is it, they want it to be 60 community, 40 state? Is that their ultimate goal? I don't remember.
I, for some reason, 59 and 41 is sticking in my head. But I might be thinking about MSBA.
No, I think you're right.
Those are the numbers in my head.
So they really want to move it even further. So this is going to get worse and worse.
That's why with each fiscal year, it becomes more.
Yep.
In particular, this year with inflation, the fact that we were able to come forward with a budget that's under. Our utility costs are up over 20%.
It's in every budget.
It's, yeah.
It's not just the.
And we've tried renegotiating. We have variety of utility vendors, a variety of solar companies we're working with. We've gone out with, to everybody, to try to get those numbers down.
I have another question. It ran right out of my head. Does anyone else have a question?
You're using, so you're able to do the E and D that you've reflected here and the E and D warrant article, which is another half million. Because you've got, I think your E and D was a million four.
1.2.
1.2. So that, so you're using the lion's share of it up in these two slugs, basically.
That's right.
And let's, just for people that aren't familiar with E and D, I mean, it's very rare to have that amount. And that would go to the credit of Dr. DeFalco for the grants that have come in. You know, even if they were only a 20 or 30,000, they add up.
Yes, they do.
And we did end with the 1.2 million. And, you know, we have every good intention of putting that back into this budget and putting it towards the towns for that feasibility study.
I remember my question. Because I know you talked about, because I know all the schools are basically around 40% capacity.
Yes.
And looking at maybe closing a building. Will that have an impact on this moving forward, where maybe it's not so scary?
That is a great question, and it is one that we are in the midst of a financial analysis of right now, literally as we're talking, that we're in the process of doing that. It will not, because of our regional agreement and the way that the language was drafted in that agreement, nothing can happen for next school year. It would need to be the following school year. And that decision would need to be made by the school committee after a public hearing prior to January 1st, 2024. So it would need to be somewhere between now and.
Or 2024.
Now and near as eve.
2024, 2025. And I think, I mean, like he said, we're going to start that, you know, financial piece on our end, which, that is not what we were looking at last year. We were looking at capacity and operating, you know, in those buildings. But doing that side by side with the feasibility study, I think.
Get more optimal number, maybe.
Well, just seeing what's recommended with that. We're going to be closer to that when we get through this financial piece. So December 30th, 23, 23 for 24, or December 30th, 24 for 25? When we have more answers on what, what is this district going to look like in the, you know, next five to six years.
Yeah, I think it's fair waiting for the data. It's just, and this is something I complained to Peter about, is that it just moves so much slower in public sector versus private sector.
But we are going to do our part and see where we would, you know, what it would look like financially.
That's right.
It's not something we would have thought last year.
Okay. Well, I definitely appreciate all the work. And Dr. DeFalco, I know you and I have had conversations around just the financial strain that some of these things put on the people in our community. And it's a tough balancing act because we want, like, I know kids in the schools, and I want them to have stuff. But at the same time, when you hear from someone like, oh, my God, if you put forth an override, I'm going to have to move. I can't afford my house. And it's that tightrope.
And you've done an amazing job keeping it where it is. So, you know, it's, we are many years beyond the word override here. So, and that is a lot of credit to the work that has been done.
I know his skin is a little looming out there, though. I don't know if I'm, I don't know how many more years we'll make without an override. But we'll have to see if closing a building makes sense. And if the financial impact isn't, if we can, then maybe we could.
Could help offset some of them, yeah.
And never have to do it. Okay, great. Anyone?
Yeah, one quick question. Do you have any numbers for like student enrollment over the past like 10 years or so?
He gave us this. This is from 2012. So 2012, that's what he gave us.
The breakdown by total boys and girls.
And actually, this is now increased, so it's 15, 21. So they had 1,948 students in 2012 with 136 teachers. And then the current data, just updated tonight, is 1,521 students and 108 teachers. So the ratio in 2012 was 14.3, and the ratio now is 14.9. So just a slight uptick.
And then what's the cost per student?
I didn't calculate the actual, like the per pupil cost? Yeah, I didn't run that number. It'll be in our budget book, though.
We usually run that by school building.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, if that would be possible to get like a trend basically from 2012 to today of like what those numbers were, like student-wise, how many students you had, and then what was the cost per student? Yeah.
Probably see something like we saw.
Yeah, just better to visualize.
And you'll see also, they, this year's numbers will be in the budget book, which will be out to folks at the beginning of next week.
Great.
Thanks for your patience on that.
We understand the struggle is real.
Yeah.
We're still tweaking things on our end, too. Any other questions? So I guess the only thing that I'll add is, because we do have free cash certified, so it's a little over $400,000. So we are able to cover this without pulling anything, cover our current budget as is, without having to pull anything from stabilization accounts, which is great. We've had over $400,000, around $400,000 the last two years in a row. I asked Peter, should we be spending more? But two data points is not enough of a trend to really predict that yet. So we have to see. Hey, I heard that. That was my husband clearing his throat. So we have to get more data points to see if it's really a trend. So, because typically, we get around $150,000 in free cash, and that's not really anything we can bank on. Mr. Gill, would you like to share any other thoughts?
No, I mean, there's some extreme. I don't know about this year, but the previous year, there were extenuating circumstances in terms of things that were going into that pot of cap.
It was catch-up of two years.
That's what Peter told me.
The recommendation is 5% target. Or that's the buffer that is generally recommended. I think you guys probably might be something similar in targeting. So be careful about trying to make.
Yes, that's exactly what Peter said. So it's just two data points, and we can't really.
So she listens to me, but I guess she listens to you, Gary. I'm not sure.
You're going to get me into trouble.
Yeah. Getting me in trouble.
All right, any other questions?
One quick question. So the budget for, is it completed at this point? Or are you still fine-tuning it?
No, it was recertified on April 6th.
Okay, so this is the final, okay.
Yes, yep. And again, it was just a delay in the governor's numbers that pushed us out another couple of weeks.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay.
If we're done with the budget, I just have a question.
Yes.
From a letter that we received.
Oh, the OPEB, yeah, yeah.
So in receiving this letter and in watching your Capitol meeting, is it your request that we request a higher amount? Is that what you were stating?
So last year, we had a meeting with the Finance Committee and all that, and we talked about, now, last year was a very different financial situation. So we had a $10,000 surplus, and I'm like, oh, we're trending in the right direction. And then this year hit, and it's, we're trending in a different direction. So, like, but we talked about like $500,000 a year into OPEB to try to overcome the deficit. So last year was $100,000. I thought we could have done more last year, to be honest. Now that the dust has settled on this budget a little bit, I would still like to see if we could put a little bit more. $200,000 total at least, and then that would be $50,000 from Millville. I don't know if other people have any thoughts. So just to brief everyone, so the Capital Planning Committee sent a letter to the school committee regarding OPEB contributions. So this is Peter's favorite topic, OPEB, in addition to school water.
Boats and motorcycles.
And school water. But so the, we're building a liability for the school district and then for Blackstone and Millville. And it's adding about $1.8 million a year.
That's correct, yep.
A year. And so we're about, and it jumped from low $30 million to low $40 million. So if someone were to come and say, hey, you owe, you need to cover your liability. It's $40 million. I don't know what we would do. So I think we need to maybe have a conversation where we build it into the budget and raise it. So I know going from 100 to 200 might be too much, but I'd like to see it increase like 100, 125, 150. And that's just me. I don't know if other people have opinions. But that's, it's just, it's a looming thing. Now, I don't know if we think about it like the national deficit, it's $31 trillion. Like, what is anyone going to do? Like, because it almost feels like on that scale for us, but.
And just so everyone is on the same page, so we, also, the school committee contributes $50,000 from E and D each year, and our staff contributes over $20,000. So we're putting $170,000 a year.
Okay.
So we do have a stable stream of.
Three years ago, it was zero for all of us.
I know.
So to receive this letter, and it ends with, we think this is unfair and fiscally irresponsible, is a little bit strong.
It didn't feel good. I'm not going to lie.
Because a lot of work has been done.
Yep.
Very recently with all, between all of us. So.
So I'll take the, I have no problem apologizing. When I make mistakes, I apologize. That was not the intent.
But when I watched the meeting after receiving the letter, I was like, oh, they are just saying they want us to ask. are just saying they want us to ask for more.
Yeah.
And I'm like, but why not just say that?
Okay.
Because this letter doesn't say that.
Well, and, and one of the members that signed off on this, frankly, was on the school committee when this all started, and he never, he never made a motion to put OPEB. I'm just, I'm just putting it out there, so I just find that a little, yeah, I just, I'm finding, I'm kind of taking issue with this letter, and as a whole, I don't find it. We have tried very hard to be a collaborative, friendly partner and work side by side, and this feels the exact opposite of that.
Okay.
And is not a way that we've ever led, or, and I won't, that's not my MO, but I just didn't find this acceptable.
Okay.
So I'll take credit for drafting it, and I'm the chair of the committee, and, you know, we unanimously approved it, everybody signed it.
Including the individual that.
That's correct.
Yeah, didn't make a motion when he was in the school committee.
So part of it is, yes, it's one of my favorite topics, and you have a very substantial and rapidly growing liability. It's a debt, it's a form of debt.
As is every town in this state.
My mother always said, two wrongs don't make a right, but any of it, we control that.
You address that in your meeting. You spoke about the liability being, I mean, and.
That's right. Nobody, most people aren't dealing with it. I will agree with you. And some people would argue that the state's gonna take it over someday, and so it comes out everybody else's other pocket. I don't know that. But you, you control it, and no, it's not suggesting that you ask for more in that letter. That letter that we all went over and signed is saying you need to try to find a way to afford your costs that you're incurring on an annual basis. These costs are continuing to increase. So that's what that's suggesting. Yes, it might have been an eye-opener, but partly that was, its intent was to be an eye-opener.
No, I don't think it was an eye-opener. We, we've worked on it for the last three years. What it was, was, I'm going to say an insult to the work that has been done, you know, without recognizing it. And it's, it's not even me. I mean, we'll go back to Jane and the negotiations with our, with our several unions. There is money being contributed from our employees. There is money coming in for a percentage of our E and D. We just made that transfer last meeting. And then the warrant on the town. And the reason that it's separated, I will clearly state that again, because I know we spoke about this last year. It is separated, so it does get funded.
I understand.
If both towns vote on it as a separate warrant article, that money is OPEB one hundred percent.
Right.
If we need to go higher, it, it's just hard to talk about asking for two hundred thousand when we just reduced our budget by nine hundred thousand.
So that your assessment.
That directly affects the kids.
Yeah, there were conversations last year to try to get it between the two towns to two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
And we had, on this end, the town was looking to do that, and we had the other folks in Blackstone going in that direction, but then they pulled back in the last minute. So it went back to the hundred. And just so you know, Millville captures, it takes no action on that warrant article. It includes it in its budget.
I understand. So I think next year, in our, in our joint meetings, this will be a conversation. Where do we want that warrant article number to be? As it's not built into the budget, but where do the two towns feel they can?
And, and knowing that the towns felt that two hundred thousand was the number they were looking for, we did literally what we have always done. We went back and said, how do we try to get to that number?
Yeah.
Okay, let's take some from E and D. That will bring us to one fifty. Let's bargain with our Unit A, which is our teaching staff. They, without issue, agreed to contribute. So we got to one seventy, wasn't the two hundred, but we did pretty well to try to make people comfortable with that two hundred thousand number. We did our best.
Okay. So I apologize again. We didn't want to hurt anyone's feelings. I agree that the school committee.
Not hurt feelings, I just, it just.
And I do agree that the school committee is, and the school has been a very good partner in the budget.
And it's a different committee that sent this letter, too. So as it was drafted.
But Peter and I.
Yeah, as it was drafted, we obviously just want to make sure people do know that there are contributions coming in from many sources.
I did not know about the fifty, to be fair.
About which one?
I didn't know about the fifty thousand. I knew about the hundred, and I knew about the twenty from the, from the employees. I did not know about the fifty. So that, you're, I mean, you're right, that's pretty, that's pretty close, for sure.
Great.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so considerate, considerate candidates for appointment through six thirty twenty-four of Council on Aging member, says Jeff Pettit and Richard Hurtow. It looks like, where's my Sealy? Jeff. Now, see, Jeff is here tonight. No.
Does the finance committee need to close their meeting at this point, or?
Oh, well, we're.
They're gonna go through.
There are probably two more budget things. Eight thirty-six. So, does Council on Aging want to come up to the table and talk about the appointment?
Good to see you.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hello.
So where do we start?
So I understand that last week on Thursday, you had Jeff and Richard come to your meeting and talk about why they were interested in the role.
Also, a third applicant, Cecile Gomes came.
Oh, she did come to, okay.
Yes, she did.
And then it looks like you recommend Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And so what made Jeff stand out from the other candidates?
His qualifications, his attitude, his energy, his expertise. He was very impressive. Even some of the other members that were applying also agreed that he was very impressive.
So you said his qualifications, expertise, like, in what areas?
What qualifications, what expertise in looking at seniors?
Okay, we have, we have a generator at our facility, and the maintenance on that generator is six hundred dollars twice a year. And he has the expertise and the certificates to be able to maintain that generator, and he said he'd be able to do it just for the costs of the material. So that would be a good savings, and anybody can, who can help anybody save money, especially with our budgets and everything and trying to stay in line, that's a good help. Also, he had, he went over the plans for where our septic is, and the plans that we had did not show it where it was. And, and this happened the last time that he was voted in, that we didn't know, you know? But he took it upon himself to check out where that septic would be. He found it, he opened it and had it available for when the people came to empty it, which was a great help, because we didn't know where it was, nor could we dig it up.
We had that issue with another building, actually.
Yeah.
Where the septic is, people don't know.
Yeah, it, it's hard. You know, there's a lot of things that we've been finding out that we don't know, like some of the rules, the appointment rules and stuff like that. So we're in a learning curve, too. And anybody who has the experience or the expertise for different things that can help us, we appreciate that very much. Cecile Gomes, she was also impressed with him, and she made the comment that she felt he was the better person to, with his qualification than obviously she was. But she still wants to keep her application on file in case of any future openings. Mr. Hurtow also seemed to be a little bit impressed with his credentials, but of course, he has his own credentials that are very impressive. So it was just the way they each presented what they could do and the way they made us feel that when we took the roll call, everybody had their own, we didn't talk about it amongst ourselves, everybody had their own opinion and made their own vote, and we took the roll call one at a time. And it just so happened that everybody voted. One of our members called in, Sue Robbins, she just got out of the hospital a few days before, and she is homebound with a broken hip. Well, it's repaired now, I hope. And she called in, and so she was a member on the roll call, and she also made her vote. So I think it was nice that everybody was involved, and they all agreed, so we went with it.
Okay.
No, I just want to say that whatever your decision is, I feel we can work with whoever. We just preferred Jeff. We felt more comfortable with him. I don't want to say any, about any tensions that were brought up between, you know, the two groups, but we just feel that Jeff was somebody that we were very comfortable with. There was nothing bad about Richard's so-called, if it's going to be appointment. Richard certainly does have a lot of qualifications. He's been on many, many committees. He's been around for a long, long, long time, well.
Long.
How many longs do you? I didn't mean it that way.
That's four longs.
You know, it, it was just, it, it was a hard decision, and we, I just felt, I'm not gonna talk for the rest of it, I just felt that Richard was morally speaking, shoved down our throes.
Okay.
But that didn't have any effect on the, the voting.
No, no.
Because we went on qualifications and expertise and the certificates he has. He has certificates with something about water that he can work with. We don't know everything that he's qualified for. It was impressive, but obviously, he'd be able to help us a lot.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
All these qualifications in my book mean nothing, because I want to know what's gonna help the seniors.
Exactly.
I, I know Richard has qualifications. I've witnessed it. Back when I was selectman on, on my first round, we unfortunately had to close the senior center, as you folks remember, and Richard was, was part of, a big part of getting money raised and getting that building back open without the town's money. He has a passionate desire to help the elderly in town. Richard's elderly, sorry, Richard, but he's very healthy. He's a seventy-seven-year-old, in a sixty-seven-year-old body, has lots of energy and is just so, he called me about this and voiced his opinion to me. He's just so passionate and has a love for the seniors, has a love for the town, and just wants to get back in there and, and do everything he can to just help the seniors.
I took.
And he does have a lot of maintenance capabilities and.
Right.
Mechanical abilities, you know, and I, I know that from working with him in other areas other than the town. So I know what his mechanical and physical abilities are, so.
Yes, he has, you know, impressive qualifications also. But he, he says he would like to be like a, a, not really a liaison person, because once you become a member on the board, you're a member on the board. However, he is there at every meeting, and he does voice his opinions, and there are many times that he's voiced different things that we have obviously taken to heart and followed. So I mean, yes, he's also qualified. We just went with a younger person. I don't mean to be age discriminate. I don't do that, because I'm old, too. But we just think the energy that's there and everything, you know? So we just thought Jeff qualified more.
I think both men qualify, but in different aspects. And I think Jeff, when, the first time that we interviewed him, he showed a, a big interest in the seniors and how he wanted to be helpful, how he had a lot of time now to donate. I, I don't know really his personal life as to, you know, does he work in a network? We didn't get into that whole thing.
So as far as the age, that means nothing to me, because my wife served there when she was forty-six, or forty-five, and for the whole term, whatever it was, three or four years. And then this year recently, she mentioned to one of the members, one of the COA members, oh, I think I'm gonna be interested in that, in that. And they said, well, you're not old enough. So she should be complimented by that, but she was insulted because not old enough.
I don't know why anybody would have said that.
You would want younger people with a lot of energy to bring, to bring stuff in.
One of the council people said that she wasn't old enough.
One of the council people, yep, he's a neighbor of mine, and so I won't use his name.
First I'm hearing about it.
Yeah.
But you all know where I live, and you know who lives next to me.
I don't know where you live.
All right.
I know where he lives. So I think one of the other.
So, but anyway, she, she decided not to pursue it, because Richard wanted to, and she wasn't gonna go, you know, said, well, they'll be in good hands if Richard gets in, so I'm not even gonna. She's got enough going on between grandchildren and, and the finance committee and other things that she's involved with that, knowing the position was, was interest, people were interested in it, then she was just gonna let other people do it. But, so anyway, that's, that's another story for another day, but, yes.
I, I don't know. When we would interview, I don't like to say the word interview, when we were talking with Richard, I had asked the question if he felt that if he was on the board, it was going to ease tensions that everybody says is going on. And I really don't remember what his answer was.
Yeah. Well, I, I can remember the last, again, back when I was selectman, six years ago, and the nine years previous to that, that nine-year span that I was on the board, and the friends of the seniors and the seniors, you know, the senior club and the Council on Aging always had a good rapport, and they, they helped each other on different fundraisers and, you know, the, the, you know, and it was really like one big board, although it was two, you know, and that's how it was before, is, is, was the way I remember it. And the way it's been lately is kind of upsetting, disheartening, that both boards should be fighting for the same thing, and that's to bring all the good they can to the seniors of this town that have put their due diligence since they've graduated high school till they were able to retire and enjoy life. And unfortunately, most of them are on a super limited budget, so it gives them a little nightclub sometimes, of course, it's at noon time, but a nightclub and a place to play cards, a place to knit, a place to dance, crochet or whatever it is, you know, that they enjoy doing. And that's, to me, is the goal that both of those boards should be doing, working together as one team.
And it most definitely is. There have been many activities that we have planned that we put on in the summertime and at wintertime, and those we have done since way before I even got here. And we follow through with that all the time. We also get grants, and we get grants for entertainers, and we share that with the senior club, so that they can use the entertainers for their luncheons to help them out. So we have, we have tried, they have tried. I don't see an issue with us. There may be little quirks here and there, but we get over it.
Right.
You have to get over it, you know, because as you said, we're there for the seniors.
Right.
And that's the most important thing. And I think the, you know, the programs and everything that we have going on with the seniors playing, with, with the senior club, playing cards, doing line dancing, having exercise and stuff like that, and a lot of that, Tina Cook has started all those, you know, different activities happening.
Yep.
So I think between us both, we are contributing to all our seniors.
Yep.
And I'd like to see it stay that way.
Right.
Wanted to say something?
Do you want me to come over or stay here?
If you could come up, that would be great.
Oh, myself, too.
Sure.
All right, come over, Jim.
Sure.
The only thing I didn't hear you say, and I, I agree, too, and I think we brought that up at last Renaissance meeting, we. We enjoy the senior club. We love that they come, that they bring seniors. But the other thing that the senior center does is outreach. So it's state-sponsored and town-sponsored for outreach, for food stamps and food programs, for insurance programs. And we have tried so hard in the last couple of years to bring other seniors in. Not per se the club, because the club is there and that's great. So we continue with those activities, but other things that seniors in this town need. So in the past two years, our senior population has gone up exponentially, like five percent and then six percent again last year.
Which is why the school population is going down.
Well, that's absolutely right. That's absolutely right. But we need to bring more of those seniors into the center. And whether it's through the van rides to get them where they need to go, whether it's providing more services that need to be paid for, that's what we're working on. So it's not necessarily just working with the club. And we, as Diane told you, they've shared entertainment from grants and so forth. The building is open for the activities that they like to do. But we need more activities. We need more things to take care of some of the other seniors that we're not reaching. And they're out there. There's a lot of them.
That's why she works very hard on a newsletter that we mail out to all the seniors that don't come in to the senior center, don't belong to the senior club. There's fifty, sixty, seventy, hundreds of more people that we're reaching with the newsletter. And bit by bit, we're getting new people in the center, just as much as they are. And they're joining their club too. So it's benefiting us all and mostly it's benefiting the seniors.
Right. And as we also said, and we brought that out last Thursday as well, a lot of the seniors that we've talked to that don't come to the center are under the misconception that they have to pay to come. And so we're trying to tell them, "No, this is your senior center. It's paid for taxpayers' dollars in the town of Millville." So there's just, there's just a misconception between club and senior center. The senior center is for the club. It's for the seniors, but it's for all those other seniors that are moving into town that we're trying to get involved and active. They're for the seniors that have lost their spouses in the last couple of years. And we're still trying by letters, by phone calls, by knocking on the doors to get them to come in. And that's what a senior center is about. It's that camaraderie and bringing people out and letting them communicate and enjoying each other again instead of staying in their house. So that's what we're doing. So back to our candidates. And they were, I mean, we had some really good conversations on Thursday. But with Jeff, it's kind of a fresh outlook. It's a fresh approach. He's not been on a lot of committees. He wants to do more for the town. And I think there are people out there, if we can find them, that want to do more for the town, but may be a little nervous to come out and do that. He's got a mother-in-law that's living with him. So he is, he is involved every day now with working with the senior center, senior citizen at home. So there's a lot, and there's cost avoidance too, because we're going to be talking about budget. And budgets are being cut. And cost avoidance is a great thing. He can, he's willing and able and wants to do some of the things that we can't do to help us. So for all of those reasons, we really liked that.
And did you have something?
Yeah. My name is Pam Marklendish, and I've been on the board for several years. And when I was chairperson, we all fought for, to get the club reopened. And we did get it reopened. Then it had to shut down again because of the virus that came on. But we went through two really big shutdowns. And never once in all that time until now were we ever questioned on our, on our way of thinking for the seniors.
No, I'm not questioning that.
Us, us questioning.
Yep.
I just want, no, no, I'm not, I just want to say that we've had changes. The senior center, okay, is a club of their own. They changed their whole board. So they ended up with four new members, four new board members. That changes things because everybody has their own outlook. We changed, our board changed. I stepped down from being chairman, Diane took over. And we also got some, you know, unfortunately, we had two members that died. And then we got replaced, we got people to come in and everything. But we did, I'm going to make it real quick. We did have three great candidates, three. You know, a woman in town who I worked personally with when I was chairman for the town for the parade, enough parade for the, for the centennial and for the memorial day. And she and I took on the whole thing, mainly. And she was really a great, great, she's a really great woman. She would have been, if she came in solo, she would have been a fantastic person to put on because she knows everybody and she's just a duo, you know? So she came, she came in, but she was saying that, you know, "Well, you've got two other gentlemen here. They have all these qualifications in which both gentlemen do." And I look at them as equal. I've known Richard longer and I like Richard and him and I get along. And we, I go to all the senior club activities, as most of us do. We always go to the luncheons. We get along fine. We laugh among each other. We can tell jokes amongst each other, you know? But the tensions rose. I'm not saying there wasn't any tensions, but we had two new boards jumping together. And all great people. And the motto is that everyone there loves the seniors. And our town has a youth population of seniors. And you know, what you've heard about different things might have been said to your wife or his husband or, you know, whatever it be, I don't, we don't know about that. We honestly don't.
No, I believe.
It's never come to our board that somebody was treated and chewed away or whatever. I personally have never seen that happen. In all the years I've been involved. But we are here for the seniors. And we do, we did have three fantastic candidates. No question about.
Very fortunate.
You know, and all highly qualified. And we had just put in that all of us agreed to have one person, one gentleman in because at that moment, he was the only person there. And he was super qualified, in kind, and he had a love for the seniors. He presented himself that way. So we all voted for him. But then the following week or two, things changed. We got, there were things that happened.
Yeah, the dates, dates.
Dates, dates got filed up. And we had to rectify that, so we had to do it over. Richard came on board and wanted to become a member. Sue came in and decided, well, she wanted to be heard also because she was, so, so because she really wanted to be heard. So, you know, everybody came in, everybody talked. And I'm telling you, it was tough. It was really tough. And I think we all went with this gentleman because we had just all went with him prior previously. It wasn't anything personal against her or him, truly. And truly, everybody there, there wasn't one person that wasn't there that didn't care about the seniors. I mean, like you and like everybody else, none of us get paid. We all put a lot of hours in. We all do things under, under the, you know, that you don't see. And we care about the seniors. And I know that this man over here cares about them. I know that for sure. I can vouch for you to, you say that.
I've known Richard thirty-five years.
But you know, this other gentleman was fantastic. Well, he came in by himself. He was fantastic. I mean, we would have been crazy not to, not to say, "Oh, my God, you are a blessing, honey. Please come work with us," you know?
Can I make a, sorry?
No, no, no problem.
Can I make a statement here? Towards the end of the interviews and the talking back and forth with the applicants, Richard made a comment that one of the reasons to be on the board is he would feel closer with both clubs. And he says he wishes he could have been a liaison. And I said, "Well, you are a liaison because you come every month. You give your side of everything. We give our side of everything and we agree with everything." You know, there may have been bumps in the road before, but those have all worked out, you know? And I think they're all good candidates.
Anything else for anyone?
It'd probably be a good idea if we had the candidates to ask questions too.
Well, only one's here.
Yeah.
So that wouldn't be fair.
We'll be able to work with whoever fills the spot of Alan. I don't want anybody to think that if you decide to appoint Richard, that we're now going to be, you know.
Yeah, no, no, I don't think.
Well, yeah, so, I mean, to go back on one of your comments, we didn't shove Richard down your throat.
Well, I didn't mean it that way. I say things that come out of my mouth.
And that's fine. And but because the, you know, we have to go by the state master general laws on how things happen. And because Alan's resignation wasn't official because it wasn't in a letter or email.
Yeah, no, you're right.
With the town clerk, then nothing before that is really is valid. It's just.
And we didn't learn that until our.
And that's okay.
Our next meeting.
That's why.
And then Peter Caruso was awesome. He sent us the rules and regulations for appointments and stuff like that. And we weren't aware of all that.
Right, and that's fine.
So now we know that and we're fixing our policy to include that.
And that's what all the boards in the towns are for, is to help each other.
Exactly.
Fall a lot and keep the town together financially and, you know, and make it all work so that the kids and the seniors and everybody in between have a, have a good place to live.
I think the summary.
That's the goal.
Sorry, I thought you were done. I think the summary of the candidates may be, I think Jeff would be able to help with some cost savings by doing some repairs himself and at cost with the certifications that he has. And then the benefit of Richard would be experience, longevity and experience with the senior club.
I think he can do also maintenance stuff.
So.
Not that I'm volunteering you to do maintenance stuff.
But I think if.
So it's a, it's really an even scale.
So Jeff did volunteer to do maintenance stuff though, so that would be.
Yeah, he could volunteer, yeah, I want to volunteer him.
No, our board, our COVID board got together at these meetings and only at these meetings. And we all came up with the same answer. And it was, it was definitely difficult. You know, it was, it was a hard decision. But we did, we did the same thing, literally twice. And we came up with the same answer twice. So we weren't, I mean, it's going to be some, something there, the reason why we did it. For all of us to come up with the same answer twice. And all of us are involved with the senior club. We go to their, we go to all their functions. And we have, we have ironed out, I think, everything. I mean, Richard's really good, good to me. I mean, I have a disabled son. He's very good to him. You know, they treat him special. I mean, that's goodness, even treating disabled people. I'll vouch for that. But, you know, we came up with the same answer twice. And it was nothing personal. It certainly was nothing personal.
Want to make a nomination?
Can I make a, can I?
Yes, of course.
Could this be tabled till next meeting so that Jeff could be here in the event the selectmen want to ask him questions? So that, again, if you have questions you want to ask him or me, it would be fair that he be here also.
So I agree that that's more fair. And if you remember from my last meeting, that's what I was really, be fair. Is that, will that throw a wrench into the council on aging if we delay one more week just to make sure we can speak to everyone?
Two weeks.
No, we have a meeting next week.
Oh, that's right, because we.
Yeah, because we moved, that's right. So it'll be a week from tonight. Does anyone have any concerns?
No, I would be approving of that.
Okay. All right. So why don't we do that then?
Okay.
And then on, I did want to, I've been thinking more about the budget. Is it okay, yes?
Should we have Sil Gomes come too, since she's also an applicant?
Did you, so I have here just Jeff and Richard, but if you want to put forth all three?
Well, I mean, she's fine with the other two because they're more qualified than she is.
So I guess I would ask her if she would like to be interviewed by us and be considered. So if she wants to, she's more than welcome to come. If not, okay.
Okay, that's fair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I did want to, just so you didn't have to get up again, I wanted to add a few items on the budget. So as you know, budget, Alan's going to come back up. That's okay. So on, and this is just my recommendation. I haven't talked to anyone about this except for Peter. So we have a shortfall of about $150,000. We didn't have that last year. So last year, what everybody asked for, everybody got. And I think I've always said, "If I have the money, you can have it." So this year, we don't have the money. And looking at the increases, and so I was looking, and I was comparing you to the library as one of the other social offerings we have in town to keep it fair. So the library asked for an increase of sixteen percent, sorry, six percent. And you had an ask for 15 percent. So I was going to, my recommendation is to trim the van driver. So it was 8,600 last year and you asked for 12,900. I was going to raise, keep that at 10,000, so an increase of 1,400. And then on line 321, the COA equipment repair was in maintenance. You asked for a $1,000 increase. I was going to eliminate that increase because we have ARPA funds available if you needed something for the next year. And then we can see where we land next year. So, and that would be a total increase of 9%, which is still 50% more than what the library got. So I'm trying to keep you closer so it seems fair. The library is not like, "Why does the senior center get everything? Why does the COA get everything? We only," I'm trying, that's really my goal. So it's still, I know it's not as much as you wanted, but it's an increase at least. It's not. So I don't know if any, that was my recommendation. I don't know if anyone has any questions or concerns or.
No, I mean, our maintenance is what it is. Things break, it has to get fixed, which again, is why we talk about cost avoidance.
Yes.
As far as the van drivers, we underfunded last year as well because we're still trying to get back to pre-COVID times. So I have, I have facts and figures going back to all of that. It's increasing, but the, with the number of seniors increasing, so are the rides and where they're going is increasing.
And medical appointments and stuff.
A lot more medical appointments and a lot more time waiting for them when a van driver can't just drop them off and then come back. So that's basically it. Those are the, those are the services, so.
So someone can still come forward on the town meeting floor and hold the line and ask for an increase and pull it.
It's, we're going, we'll find a way. We'll find a way to, to take care of it for sure, but.
Anyone else have any concerns, questions? I just don't want to make them come up and down and up and down and up and down on the budget.
If we had a friends group that would stand in the middle of downtown.
I think we talked about fundraising, we can't fundraise.
Yeah.
We're not a 501(c)(3). See, we can't fundraise as a senior center.
It's against the rules.
As a council on aging, we cannot do it.
Well, that's what the club's for.
Yeah, but we don't, we haven't seen any funds.
That's their money, that's not our money.
We could do some funds.
Gary?
Yeah, I'm just going to have, the finance committee has similar, we haven't talked about numbers yet, but similar concerns. It's just not specific to the senior center in terms of judging or ask per se. It's just more looking at the budget supporting that increase after a substantial increase last year as well. Really bringing the funding for the senior center, you know, up by some amount, to where it was prior to the override cuts. So from my perspective, the senior center has made all handsome. And I think we're all supportive of continuing to increase services for the seniors. But we've got applied discipline just like the other parts.
Well, I think as we said last year, and it hasn't changed, 50% of the entire budget is just the maintenance and upkeep of the building. And the other half is the salary for our director and van drivers. And that's basically it. There's no real services other than van drivers.
But it's good to know if we can use some of that maintenance and stuff with the ARPA funds. As long as that would be a possibility.
It's a possibility, for sure.
You know, then it gives you hope.
Yes. We're very lucky that we got almost a million dollars in ARPA funds, so.
Does that, does that run out or stop at certain time?
Yes, we have to spend it by 2026.
We have to commit for it by the end of 2024 and then spend it by 2026.
Yeah, but I have, I don't know if anyone's been paying attention to the recent budget proposal. Yeah, but I have, I don't know if anyone's been paying attention to the recent budget proposals, but one of the things that's on the table in the House is to take back these funds that are unspent. So we need to spend it as soon as we can.
Okay.
So the board has earmarked the bulk of it.
Yeah.
But, but hasn't committed it. But earmarked is closer to committing than doing nothing with it.
Yeah.
All right, well, that's good to know.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So you have F and G.
Yeah, so consideration reporting Richard Herto to Green Communities Committee through 63023. You can walk around and paste the quote if you need to, Richard.
Okay, I raised my hand at your last meeting saying I'd consider being on your green committee. Didn't know if there was any questions that the board has for me or if I hit the budget or whatever.
And he's the only person interested, other than there might be one or more people on this board
Matt.
that might be interested in helping Richard because he's, you know, he's leading the charge here right now. And I think that's great that Richard's willing to do this. So I, there's no pressure, there's no pressure.
I don't know if there could be two Richards on a board, though.
Oh, I think it works very well. It's easier.
That's some confusion.
No, not at all.
Richard, number one.
I mean, we'd have to have Matthew, the secretary.
Of course.
And then there'd have to be people.
Or I'll change my name to Richard, too, so they can't do anything.
But think of that, that there could be a core which could then grow from there because that is a very important committee that's been thinking for some time now.
Right.
And does good things, raises good money, can raise good money and do wonderful things like he's talking about doing.
Okay, what are some of the things you were talking about doing?
Am I in the committee yet?
No.
Well, I just want to know, so.
This is part of your interview, so what are, what are your big ideas, Richard?
All right, part of my ideas is I've been successful in the past putting up cell towers, solar farm, did the subdivision. I've put my hands in a lot of projects. And after I volunteered to be on this committee, whether or not I get appointed on that committee, I made some phone calls and I included Peter in one of the emails to a select energy that's out of Hopkinton for the possibility of doing something here in the town, whether it be solar, wind, cell tower, whatever we could do to generate some income. And what that would involve is a committee of one, two, three, or whatever, getting together on our first meeting, getting a map of the town and any parcels of land that the town owns of five acres or more. And then I talked to this young lady and I told her that the board was meeting tonight and that I may get appointed to this. If not, I CC'd Peter. And she had suggested that there be a Zoom meeting afterwards so that we could talk about the feasibility of what could possibly take place in the town. And once I look at the map and the amount of land, how, where they're at with the high tension lines could generate some serious income for the town. The only thing is with these projects, you know, 10 months, a year is nothing as far as getting a permit from National Grids and various, the town and the whole nine yards. I've got another project going on up in Maine. I've got a battery project going on in Uxbridge. So I've got a lot of things going on that I can't sit by the phone and wait for them, but they're all in the works. So if the town is interested in getting involved, there may be a meeting every quarter or something after the first meeting to just see where we're going on this thing because it could be solar panels put up on the school roof. There's, there's a lot of possibilities. Just need to know where the high tension lines are to make it feasible for these companies. So that's my presentation and any questions from anybody?
And it seems to me it would help to have some leaders of the town helping him with that effort who are also reasonably familiar.
Tough schedule.
With properties and how best to utilize it.
So I should probably make a motion to nominate Matthew to it, too?
And he can do what? He can make a motion. First he got it.
I will make a motion to appoint Richard Herto to the Green Communities Committee through 63023. Looking for a second.
Second.
Andrew was half a second faster, he beat you. Any further discussion?
Okay.
Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew? Jennifer is aye. Matthew?
Aye.
All right, you're in. It was tough.
Anybody going to offer me their condolences or what?
No, but I happen to know that someone on the finance committee is going to be all done on June 30th. And if it's only a quarterly meeting.
There's a lot of, it's not.
I'm in so much trouble right now.
Quarterly meetings, it's not a weekly or monthly thing, but initially to get it off the ground and see where we're at. And then follow up on them, on these projects.
And I don't mean to put anybody on the spot, but I think the agenda would allow you to appoint somebody from this board to that committee.
Right now?
Right now, this evening.
I have a motion now. I mean, Matthew's just jumping out of the seat, you know.
I'll make a motion. No, I'm just kidding. I don't want to get in trouble. I was going to appoint Richard.
No, that's fine.
Really?
Yeah.
All right, so I'll make a motion to appoint Richard Brownless to the Green Communities Committee through 63023.
Can I make a motion for Peter to be on this?
3023.
I'm an advisory person.
So you be.
So we put, should we put him through six, we'll put you through six. Actually, should, his is only through June, should we?
No, so then it's a one-year thing, you're just going to re-up them coming in. So you're just doing that, but re-up.
Um, is this, but for a board of selection member, is this an appointment as well? Or would this be like, because you know how like on Capitol, I'm.
Yeah, that's a, that's a bylaw required thing, but you can appoint, I think you can appoint.
Also through 630?
Sure.
Through 63023.
Matthew, can you pass this, Jennifer, please?
Roland beat you that time.
I beat you on that one.
Yep, you did. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Am I voting?
You're voting.
Aye.
Andrew? Jennifer's aye.
Aye.
Matthew's totally dodged a bullet.
Congress can vote for a pay raise.
You can nominate me. I'm not going to denounce. If you want to nominate me.
I, I think we should file a motion to.
Please?
I think we should make a motion to nominate Matthew to the.
I'll second it. Can I second it?
Someone, he made, is you making or you?
I'm making a motion.
Okay.
He just seconded it.
And then Matthew seconded himself. Great, this is like amazing. We're filling a whole community one meeting. I won't get in trouble with my husband now. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
That's great.
That's awesome.
Yay.
Richard?
So about that pay raise.
We will double your salary.
Double my salary. I can't vote for your pay.
So I only have one more question.
Yes.
When would be the first time we could, just one time, get together so that I can tell? I gave you the emails that I've been exchanging with this company in Hopkington. And I told her that on the 25th I would get back to her to let her know when we could have a Zoom meeting to move forward.
Maybe would after-town meeting be okay? We have quite a lot of meetings.
Well, I can tell her tomorrow that the committee was formed, I'm on it and that.
We'll meet after May 10th or something.
Not a problem.
Okay. We'll lighten the load a bit since we have a lot going on.
That's fair.
Okay.
All right, so if I can exchange emails?
Absolutely.
With you two gentlemen?
Which one, your selectman? Five?
Five and two.
Two.
Two, okay. And you're?
Five.
Five? Five and two, okay.
Richard is five and then Matthew is two.
All right, so I'll send an email saying, hi, it's me, and we'll go from there.
Awesome.
Sounds great. Okay.
And two, and I'm going to CC you on this.
Yes, absolutely, yep.
You're in the loop of this.
Yep.
In case you want to be on that Zoom meeting.
I will be on the Zoom, yeah, I would do that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
You're the trigger, made it happen.
Yep, good job.
Thank you. Tip of the sword.
Yeah. All right, just needed that.
Yeah, and it took less than.
You got your way, Peter, you got your way.
Less than 20 minutes.
Took you how long?
I know.
I don't know how long you've been a selectman.
Any other questions? Nope. All right, thank you for your time, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's good. Two guys, great.
That'll be good.
Can't wait to see that first check.
A lot of zeros.
It's all zeros. Okay, consideration, actually, why don't we skip that one? Why don't we go to the budget, so the finance committee? Because is Joan here?
No, and she's not coming. That's clear in that because.
Okay, so then why don't we skip ahead to the budget? And so we're going to jump down to new business item K, budget for the consideration updates, if any, followed by our recommendations. So I had those just small changes to try to keep the increases all in line. I know everyone can stick to the 3% increase, but I'd like to keep them all kind of in the same ballpark at least. So when one is really a lot higher than the others, it's quite an outlier. Andrew, are all your questions answered?
Yes.
So just an update, the state aid or the cherry sheet numbers have been revised slightly but are not in this model you see right now.
Okay.
So for your next meeting, you'll see that the cherry sheet state aid is going down about four grand total. Okay, so that means increase the deficit. Separately, I've had communication with Tri-County Voc Tech. And in this, it's budgeted for three, roughly three students. They've come back and recommended we only budget for one student. Won't change the transportation number budgeted, but will change the tuition by about 32 grand. So.
Sorry, which one is that?
Tri-County is going to go down to just, just above 19 grand. So you'll see another model this week for next week's meeting. And I'll have it to finance committee, they have a meeting coming up this week. So probably do this tomorrow. Those are the only changes I'm aware of right now to this, you know. But it is a, it is an example of how these other schools can swing the budget, right? I mean, that Tri-County number could change between now and, you know, town meeting, unfortunately. As could the Norfolk Aggie. And the Norfolk Aggie is based on best current information.
Okay. So then rough and tough, that was like a 170 deficit. So now it went up to 174. Would that change on the Cherry Street?
Yeah, and then we're down 32.
So 142.
Yeah.
And then.
And then a few shekels there for the council on aging, right?
So 140.
We're at 140, yeah, thereabouts.
And then the snow and ice number came in at 45.
45-ish, that's in the Warren draft, yeah. That's out of free cash.
Yep, that'll be our free cash. Anything else on the finance committee on those items?
To make it clear to people, when you said snow and ice, that's 45 over like an eighty.
Yes.
Correct.
Sorry, so we budget 80,000 a year and we went over by 40,000. So 45, so it was 125,000 total.
How much snow?
I, I think, well, some of the, I think the costs of things went up, like salt and all that stuff. That's like, if you look at the changes in utilities for all the budgets, they're all like, this went up. Like on the library, they're like, this went up by this much. It's like.
To be fair, we did a, we had a little bit of a late season.
Yeah, ice. Yeah. So anything else? So that puts the deficit roughly, so if we go back, so I just want to do the math on them. So we have 413,000 free cash. We'll need, say, 140 to balance the, sorry. Yeah, 140 to balance the budget, then 45,000 for snow and ice. We talked about 80,000 for a highway stabilization. Anything, am I missing anything, Peter?
No, I mean, we're not doing anything to capital stabilization because that's at a 200 grand, which is where capital likes it, yeah. And public safety stabilization does its own thing from the ambulance, 50% of the ambulance receipts. And OPEB is the only other unknown variable for which, right now.
That's not, because that leaves us with 148,000 and I feel like that's not right. Oh, maybe it is.
All the increases to highway are from the, basically because of the landscaping, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's right, which has just moved around.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
So that's, yeah, the majority of the increases. So they took over landscaping at some of the buildings that wasn't in their budget. So we appropriately moved their budget to that.
Yeah.
So it can be paid out of the group that's doing the work. Okay, so it leaves us with 148 to put into stabilization. Maybe we can, actually, we can make it.
We want to leave 13, right?
Yeah, 13,000. So then that will leave us 13,000 extra to either roll over into free cash for next year. And then that means we'd have 135,000 for stabilization. And that leaves 13,000 for people to pull if they want to uptick on anything. Don't forget we have ARPA funds. Okay. Any other, anything else on the budget? For tonight? Okay. Yep, no, please, Andrew.
Would it be possible to look at fire department again? Just because, because, do we have any updated like numbers as to where they stand this year in their budget?
Uh, I do have a year-to-date report for, through March or through April 15. So they have, yes, they have exposure on their salary line items, which, you know, is a function of maybe budgeting not enough, also activity, right? So there, there is exposure there to get to the end of the year on those line items, but not necessarily overall. They've used up all of their maintenance, basically, repair and maintenance of vehicles.
So do you have like the percentage of how much they have left over?
So they're, they're, they're about 15% left over from 416 through the end of the year. And this would, so they're, they should be tracking at 79%. They've used up 85% total, so.
Over by 6%.
Yeah.
Has they, have they, has the fire chief or the fire department looked at the, when they get a call, how that works? To make sure that we don't get.
Staffing schedule?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we had him on the agenda previously, couldn't get him here because of activities. He, he was going to come and talk about that. So, you know, we can get him May 1st, I think would be the goal, barring any fire. Couldn't get him tonight.
Yeah. Because that would be.
And there are other issues floating around there, they're keeping him busy, I'll just say that.
Yeah.
Yep.
They're gonna solve all busy.
So my only concern with that is that we're increasing it when they're over budget two years in a row, which is not a good trend. And I, I get that they're underfunded, but who's not underfunded at this point? And.
I think that the fire department in particular, though, wasn't getting funding attention based on the previous dynamics of public safety.
But it did seem like there was a bit of a loose.
Last year, there was, for sure, because they went over by like forty thousand dollars on salaries. And this year, it looks like if they go over by like five or ten thousand, like, that's much better management.
Tighten it up, but.
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
Still need an action plan, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, for sure. And Peter and I talked about some things regarding on-call, making sure that, you know, we had on-calls.
Properly scheduled.
Yeah.
Yes.
You, you got twenty on-call firefighters, minimum of seven show up every tone, and each one gets two hours pay. Depending on how many tones you have in a day, you could blow your budget quickly.
Quickly, yeah.
And so I think, it was one of my concerns with the fire chiefs. I, I wanted to kind of examine some of those numbers and what he's spending and maybe reexamine whether or not we needed an additional FTE and then reduce the on-call size.
Yeah.
Which may offset some of what he needs. I'm thinking maybe the model's not working, the current model, or it could be tweaked.
Also, I mean, probably don't know this, but like, is there a, like, when they get a tone, do they have, like, for what type of level? I mean, if it's like a larger fire or if it's just a simple, like, fire alarm that.
Yeah, I, I'd rather he spoke about that. I don't know that well enough, frankly.
Because if it's just.
I, you know, and I think that it's a haphazard thing as it is. They, they tone it out and they may get nobody, nobody showing up when they need people showing up. And part of the recent activities going on related to that, frankly.
I think there's more dynamics to that than, yeah.
Yeah.
But so, but it does, it is a budget that needs careful management. And careful management, that does require some of the ideas that Richard's been talking about, at least considering those. What's budgeted here is trying to factor in reality of current operating procedures, if you will, right? And anticipating some future needs as well as potential changes in staffing level. Not, not numbers, but who's, who becomes what at some point in the future.
I think we kinda need to dive into that probably off this meeting, but.
Yes.
Okay. So we can certainly have him come to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Um, I just would say that I, I have had some conversations with the fire chief about his budget and how tight he feels it is already. So I'm not comfortable lowering his budget any further. So if I get, if it's four to one and that's for to lower, that's fine. We have a democratic process, that's how it works. But I just, I know he already feels underwater and tight with this. Because of, so that's something he and I have talked about and I, and I, I'm going to not, I don't support lowering his budget any further, just based on other things and other dynamics that are, that are going on. But that, again, it's democratic process, so.
I think we need to look at the model personally.
Yeah, no, that, I think that makes sense, for sure.
I'd rather start there than trying to force the, the matter.
Yeah. Okay. So anything else on the budget? Nope. All right, Finance Committee, if you wanna close your meeting, we're done talking about the budget.
Yeah, could I get a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
What?
She has an article on you.
There's an agenda item, we'll get to that.
Yeah, that's our present budget. We can just spend it.
Okay, the meeting is, the Finance Committee meeting is adjourned at nine-thirty.
Okay, for those who aren't here, the Finance Committee adjourned their meeting at nine-thirty-two. Okay. All right, so now I'm gonna go back up to consideration, actually, since Tina's here. Why don't we skip to her? So sorry, Tina, I didn't realize that you were waiting to talk about that. So we'll go new business, three H, double I. Senior Center CO2 Alarm Wiring at seventeen hundred.
Yeah, and Tina did finally give me a, gave me a quote today, and it's actually more eighteen hundred is the preferable number, right?
Do you wanna come to the table, Tina?
Yeah.
So it's eighteen.
I have copies of this if you want.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so hot off the presses, updated to eighteen hundred.
Yes, yes. So what this is, is it's for a CO detector. The fire department came in at one point in time, the detector was making a noise. And so then I had to call my on-call, my fire people. They came out and the CO detector was wired incorrectly. It had too much voltage to it. So then they came back and they rewired, but then there was an issue. And now they have another issue where, so now I am finally all set to have them connect the wiring from the CO detector, which is in the kitchen. And it has to be connected to the fire panel. So that if the CO detector does, God forbid, go off, it'll notify the panel, which notifies the on-call, which notify the fire department. So it'll all be connected the way it should be. So it's, it's, yeah, eighteen hundred dollars and, you know.
And it's not a normal maintenance item, you know, not a recurring type of maintenance item. So that was the, why the suggestion to have it. ARPA funding, even though ARPA is not a bottomless pit, but this seemed like a very good use of ARPA.
Right.
For you all. And Tina sent me something else today looking for ARPA money, but I haven't looked at that. That was later than that. Haven't looked at that. We might bring that for the next meeting.
Next week, okay.
Okay.
You take a look at that and you might wanna consider the fact that I think this building needs it and probably the library needs that as well, because.
Yeah, it's a door opening thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I think the American Disability Act might have an issue with these buildings not having that.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you can look at that for me at the next meeting, I would appreciate it, so. Yes.
One quick question.
Yeah.
Was it, because you were saying it was, they, like, tried to fix the wiring, was that a different, was that all?
No, it's kind of all connected. So initially, it was the, the CO detector was up in the ceiling and it was buzzing. It had been buzzing for a while, so I didn't have an issue with it. But when the, when the fire guy came in, apparently he thought that might be an issue. So then I had them come in and they realized there wasn't wiring run from the kitchen to the panel. So they did that. But now I needed somebody come in and connect it all up, along with an electrician, because they bring in an electrician to do this all. So once I get it all connected up, we'll be hunky-dory and hopefully I'll never have an issue with the CO detector again, you know, so.
At least the batteries won't go off in like two AM.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's hardwired, right?
It will be hardwired. So, so if it should go off, it's gonna go off at the panel. And the panel, they connect to the fire department, who will then probably call me. But hopefully not at two o'clock in the morning, because they have their own key to get into the building.
Great.
So. So, yeah, so that's where we're at now. Once I get that done, who knows if they'll have another issue at another thing, you know? So it seems anytime I have these, this company come in, you know, they're, they're looking at the fire extinguishers. Well, they might be out of, you know, order, so now I have to have a new fire extinguisher. I'm like, oh, my God, I don't need all these extra bills. So, so that's, that's that.
Okay. Any other questions for Tina? Okay. And then just, there's also an email.
Well, before you get to that, I have, I, I'm gonna call this under the forty-eight hour section of the agenda, but I'm asking to bump it up to this because it's council on aging or senior center, ARPA. That, so I'll hand them out. It has to do with the van. The board, back in the spring of twenty-two, approved ten thousand for the van that they were applying for under a grant. And then back in May, about just over a year ago, you guys got word that the ten thousand was not gonna be enough, and it was thirteen grand. And the board approved ARPA funds of thirteen. Now you've reached, just Friday, but you saw first today.
Yeah.
That the van cost, the twenty percent share of the town would be fifteen, seven, twenty, and eighty cents.
Right, right.
So.
Because of the increase.
While we're here, they're looking for a commitment, I think, if I read the email correctly, from the town, that will cover the twenty percent. So the request is to add another twenty-eight hundred bucks to what's previously been approved use of ARPA funds for this twenty percent share of the van.
And again, that money doesn't come out unless we do get awarded the grant, in which it looks like this, they're finally working on it again. So, you know, but until I tell her that I got the okay from the board, it's gonna sit there, so.
Okay. So, not that I don't want to give this money, because I do, but it keeps going, like, will they just do this? So it stops going up, we can just buy it?
I, I think at this point, they, they are going to, yeah, yeah.
They need to kind of move it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, this was all supposed to be, the, the award was supposed to be granted back in November, December timeframe. But they put it off because of the increases and all of this and that. And they weren't sure how much the, the, you know, the car companies were gonna actually charge for this. So that's why it's, but hopefully, right now, this is it. The fifteen thousand would be it.
Fifteen thousand eight hundred.
Yeah. I didn't know the exact number.
Should we make it like sixteen, five?
Go for it.
Because here, I'm like, okay, approving this, I think it's a good use, especially they're covering the other forty percent. This is why I talk about when municipals move slowly compared to the private sector, like, it's.
So, question, so what are they basing this off of? Is this a master price agreement through the state? Are they buying the van on your behalf and we're chipping in twenty percent? How's this work?
No, from what I understand, the state comes up, they, they contact the dealers and that's, they, they work with the dealers to get the price. It's, it's not just that for us, this is a.
It's a seven-passenger van that you're getting, right?
Right.
Right. The dealerships and the manufacturers have to submit a, a fleet pricing through government contracts, right? So I'm just kinda curious what contract they're, I mean, are they using a master price agreement? Are they using Plymouth County, Worcester County, like, how?
Well, whoever you're filing the grant through, they're the ones who are supplying the vehicle and the price.
Yeah, I'm going.
And the award, okay? So I don't, I don't know beyond that.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know the big details of how they get these vehicles or.
And you put in for this a year and a half ago or longer, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's, yeah. And that's what it was, was we pay twenty percent, we get a brand-new vehicle, you know, a seventy-thousand-dollar vehicle and it's, you know.
ADA compliant?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Wheelchair van.
Oh, yeah, it's a wheelchair.
That's specifically what it is.
Yeah, yeah. Two, two wheelchair spots in the seven-passenger van. Yeah.
I mean, do we know how close we are at this point? I mean, is it like, not, not to be, but like.
Well, that email tells you it's, it's, we're in the decision phase right now. I can't go any further with them until I say I have the fifteen thousand eight hundred. Until I, I, I can confirm that, then we'll go. Last I heard from them, it was, again, now it's getting to the point where, you know, probably by, what's this, uh, uh, probably by June or July, we'll have word if we got it. If we got the van, we won't probably get delivery until later than that, though.
It's like twenty weeks, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, will the price be locked in at, at any point?
Hopefully, at this point, it will be locked in.
Well, her email, her email says they've completed the procurement.
Yeah.
And that's what generates the price.
Right.
And now they're, they're determining who gets them. And so in that process of determination, they're confirming that the community can cover, that will cover the twenty percent.
Right.
Should it be awarded. So I think yours, that's, that's the best indicator we've seen so far, right?
Yeah, that's as close as we're getting to the process being done.
So we're looking probably for a motion to award this tonight?
Yeah.
Yes.
And you wanna put a higher cap on it in case it does?
I was gonna make it sixteen-five, but Richard, do you have a quick question?
Yeah, I just, does this vehicle that we're getting, assuming this is approved, does that include them taking the old one? Or are we then able at a later time to sell this one and the dollars go back to the town?
Yep, we can do that.
That would go on in like units a bit or something.
That's right.
Easter plus would be advertised, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I will make a motion to raise the amount allocated for the Senior Center wheelchair-accessible vehicle to sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. He's way faster than you.
I was, I just let him have it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. All set, and you have, tell them you have a little cushion.
I'm not gonna tell them that. I'm gonna tell them, it's doable, because that's what their, their question was, is this doable?
Oh, and we should do these other two.
Yeah, I was gonna make a motion to approve the Senior Center CO2 alarm wiring for eighteen hundred dollars.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Roland. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. All done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Feel like you guys are taking over my job of seconding things.
It's mine first.
Yeah, well, I kinda thought it was handed down to me for a while, so.
Yeah, well, things change.
We can make like a chart and draw, like, or draw names from a hat, like, okay, this will be the person who makes all the motions. This means this person makes all the seconds. Okay, and then, so the library is looking for twenty-five hundred dollars to paint the exterior.
The whole exterior or just like a part?
No, the whole exterior.
Are they gonna be doing it, like, in-house or like?
No, cars home improvements.
So, okay.
I, I think it's exterior, that's what I understood. Doesn't say that, but, and it seems like a small amount for that.
That's what I was gonna say.
Okay, well, maybe it's something.
Like, but maybe it's. Paint over it or? Uh, yeah, I, I'm sorry.
Nobody had contacted the sheriff's office?
I was about to ask that question.
Why?
Beat you.
I know, I was thinking.
I take the sheriff's office for?
I was thinking DOC, because they have programs, Department of Corrections, Prison Industries.
They painted the police station the last time.
Oh, really?
A few years ago, they came to the park and painted the cannon and all we did was buy them pizzas. It was a fantastic deal for the park.
Buy lunch and pay for the, as a fee for the transportation back and forth.
The sheriff's already DOC.
And the material also.
Okay, so we maybe ask Dave to look at that first?
Gonna pay for the paint.
So you could.
Paint, transportation, and food.
With the caveat of looking to.
Okay, so we can do that, so.
See, I have to come back again.
Does the team feel comfortable with that? So what we could do, sorry, the board, not the team. We could say that, yes, we'll pay for this, but provided that we want them to look at, contact the sheriff's office first and see if that's a viable option. Should it not be a viable option, then we will pay.
Sheriff indoor DOC, Department of Corrections.
Yeah, then we'll pay the twenty-five hundred out of ARPA funds. That way he can have, you know, move forward.
Right.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
Okay, so looking.
So I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-five hundred for painting of the library with the caveat to first contact the sheriff's department and Department of Corrections.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. Okay. All right, and now, it's been a really long meeting.
Just started.
I know. Now I'm looking for my paper on the zoning board. Here we go. Zoning Board of Appeals. So. Oh, so Joan's not able to be here. Do we wanna, is there a way to wait for her or Tom to be here or is that not possible?
No, I, and, and they didn't, she didn't really wanna do it. She's just willing to agree to do it. She's done it before.
Okay.
She's his wife. We have a one-person zoning board of appeal. It has to have a public hearing, it needs a second person. She's willing to do it for a six-month stint. And so if you read through this, you can see we checked in with council, all that sort of thing, trying to find ways around it. And just to make, just for expediency's sake and to make her life less difficult and his, I said, I see, I would recommend that you don't need, don't require her to be here. She, she's been involved in other capacities in the town before, so.
Okay. Well, she's done this before, too.
And she's done this before, in a brief stint, this.
So there's only one acting person on?
Yes, there's only one who's been doing the zoning board of appeals. And so he can't hold a hearing.
Right.
There is a request for a hearing and he's got somebody, you know, a hundred days to actually hold it, so the clock's ticking.
And we already put you on the Green Committee, Richard, so we can't put you on this now.
Well, yeah, it's like quarterly, but, yeah. No, so how big's the board, three, three people on that board typically or?
Three, yeah.
It's kind of an important role not to have staffs. We can nominate Roland.
Yeah.
Those deaf eyes.
It was Andrew's idea.
He's like.
You stole the seconds, that's fine.
You you'll see, I even checked to see whether I could be appointed to that, but was advised that I would have too much conflict of interest.
All right, so I will make a motion to appoint Joan Mulvey for a sixth ninth appointment to the Millville Zoning Board of Appeal Appeals. Term to end ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, and I think that is the whole new business. Only took seven days. Okay.
Well, except your recommendations.
Oh, yeah. Totally skipped one. I totally skipped one.
Minor detail.
All right, so. This is item three J. Recommendations for the warrants.
So, as I pointed out in the the transmittal letter, I've drafted the explanations. I put in placeholders for the recommendations, so those, other than capitals recommendations, those are valid because those those votes have taken place. These are just placeholders, and so we change them depending on how you all vote. There is a numerical sequence typo. So there's really, oh, we missed, we, I missed changing. I thought I had, but I missed changing. So Article eighteen is really, should be seventeen, for example. And I'm gonna ask you to take no action on one of these articles, such as the Title Five one, because that's still. Further.
Investigation?
Investigation, analysis, and buy and buy certain people.
Okay.
Department of Revenue and things like that.
That's disappointing. I was hoping we could move forward with that.
I was too.
And I thought it was the right thing to do.
Yeah.
So I did for sure. I think it was the right thing to do. Okay. So. Any concerns of doing this tonight? Because we could do it next week, right?
You could do it next week, or you could do, just run through them without, just like, even considering saying the names for. Expediency's sake. And to the extent somebody wants to hold and discuss something.
Okay.
Versus the explanations as provided, and then you take a vote on the ones that aren't held. That's a thought.
Okay.
Yeah.
Why don't we do that then? That should move things along a little faster.
Yeah.
Just because it is.
And you can leave something for next meeting if you want.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna run through them. If you, if anyone wants to discuss any of them, hold it. If not, then all the ones that aren't held will be automatically, we'll take a vote on those, too, okay? I won't say to approve, because you're allowed to vote how you want. Okay, so Article one is monetary increases. So this article requires that any individual making or mending a motion which increase a budget line item that has not been recommended by the Finance Committee must also provide a source of the funding increase. Article two, Budget of the Fiscal Period. Do we have budgets from fiscal, wheels from fiscal?
We have nothing identified at this stage. We know of nothing.
So this would be just if there's a bill from last year. We have to pay it.
That's every year.
That's snow and ice deficit, as we discussed, is a little over forty-five thousand dollars.
Yep.
Highway Department, Chapter Ninety, so this is an annual article to raise appropriate borrowed transfer funds in anticipation of reimbursement revenues for road repair. I'm gonna go brief on the explanations, because I think a lot of us know these. Cable license fees, so this is an annual article to move forward a sum of money for the cable franchise license agreement with Charter and BMR. Um, Article six is a creation of a highway and bridge stabilization fund. This was something that Brian Mulally requested, and we thought, on the finance, on the capital planning committee, we thought it was a pretty good idea, so we thought it, put it forward. Um, and right now we have about eighty thousand dollars earmarked to go in there.
But you're not, just if I could, you, the final number won't be determined until basically town meeting in the motions.
Yeah.
Right? Because things could change between now and then. I don't know that they will, but they could, for example, snow and ice.
Yeah.
Will change, or who knows what.
So right now, we're ballparking eighty thousand. Um, Capital Stabilization Fund. I don't think we're doing anything with this one.
Correct, so you'll say no, take no action, yeah.
This would be if we needed to add anything to stabilize capital. We don't need to. We didn't take anything out. Um, General Stabilization Fund, it looks like we'll have around a hundred and four, thirty-five thousand to put in there based on.
Okay.
That. Um, OPEB, so this is, oh, that's what we missed, twenty-five thousand for OPEB.
Yeah.
So we um, are looking to put money in our OPEB, because this is for the town's OPEB. Fiscal Budget is a big, long spreadsheet that we've been talking about forever.
Uh, can we hold?
Yes, we can hold that one. Um, Article eleven is BMR and Other Post-Employment Benefits, so that is to make sure we set aside money for our growing.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Uh, for the ones we aren't holding, are we going to take individual votes or just lump them altogether?
So the ones that we're not holding, I thought we could take a vote across all of them to approve? Or not? So if you want to hold eleven?
Yep.
Okay.
And just point of reference on that one, last year you took no action, and you'll be probably asked to take no action this year, because it's already in the budget.
Okay, that's, that was my thing, so, okay, never mind then.
Okay, but we can hold it. Um, BMR School Committee Stipends, I will hold this one. Um, BMR Capital Stabilization Fund, so this is, they want to take out E and D and put it in stabilization. This will probably be going to fund the um.
Feasibility.
Feasibility, thank you. Uh, Article fourteen, Cable Appropriations, this article appropriates sufficient funds to fund the operations of the cable coordinator and their team. Um, Article fifteen, we're gonna skip.
Take no action.
Take no action. So should we hold it? Or vote on it, or should we not recommend it?
Uh, you're gonna not recommend it, so you might want to hold and deal with it individually.
Okay, so we'll hold it into ours.
Yep.
Quick question, uh, Article fourteen, so that, is that the?
So that's different than the seventy-five hundred. This really, you know, we we paid Tim, the guy behind the, you know, screen. And this allows us, it just, it comes out of the money from the pa, from, you know, the cable charter pays for that.
I was just, so.
Not, it's not.
A part of the budget.
It's not part of the budget.
Yeah.
It's money that comes in based on people's ca, pays, pay their cable bills every month. And the the funding, so this allows us to write the checks to.
Okay.
Pay for stuff and pay wages.
And that's where the money comes that we send to the BMR.
Yep.
Correct.
Communications.
So do you want to hold fourteen, or you good? Okay. Um, fifteen, we should hold because of the other activities. Article sixteen is a bylaw adoption municipal.
So Jane's here for that one, and this is her original explanation. It will be refined a little bit, because Jane's working on that. But I, we used her, what she already had. It's complicated, but in summary, I think it it allows Jane the freedom to be more flexible in terms of making deals with people who are, you know, on tax title.
Payment plans, period.
Okay.
You need to adopt the statute, otherwise it's very vague, and the default is sort of this wishy-washy.
Maybe up to two years thing, and meanwhile, if if all of the taxpayers have to stay current with bills as they are rolling forward and pay the amounts in arrears, you get a lot less compliance and a lot less uh, positive outcomes. So by extending it to up to five years, um, MCTA has a ton of information about it, that you get much better results from that, and basically, it'll enable me to do my job. So please.
So I'm good with that, but do they want to hold it for further discussion?
I'm good with it.
Okay.
It's a shock that we haven't adopted her already. I was going through that like, oh.
We find that happens sometimes, unfortunately.
Yes.
There is no Article seventeen typo.
Thank you.
Article eighteen is Police Cruiser, so this is to fund seventy-five thousand dollars for a police cruiser, which is on the schedule that the capital planning recommends, and then funds to purchase a command vehicle for the chief, because the one he has right now has a hundred and thirty-seven thousand miles on it. That's why it passed due.
And a piece of, the balance of it is covered by ARPA that you've already approved.
Yes. Um, yes.
On that one, um, does that affect the plan that you have for capital planning at all, or?
No.
Just, okay.
Because we'd buy a new cruiser every other year.
I was just double checking to see if that.
Command vehicle, we have to build that in, but we're thinking every six to eight years.
Correct.
We'll evaluate it.
Okay.
And if it can go ten, fine, but if it's six, it's.
Okay, yeah, that's.
Okay. Um, nineteen is a capital item for fire hydrant replacement and repairs, and this will come from the Public Safety Stabilization Fund. And we also put this in front of Representative Soder and Senator Fatman, but if not, then I'll go there. Um, Zoning Bylaw Changes, I'm not, Peter, I'm not familiar with this one.
So if, really, it's very simple. It's a housekeeping article in the explanation. It corrects number typographical.
Oh, that's right.
And spelling errors. It provides clarity to zoning bylaws by adding needed definitions of terms, amends existing definitions for clarity, and corrects an erroneous mass general law reference in the existing town bylaws. And so Dylan Lynn Omar, uh, junior planner, went through pretty extensively, came up with these. Planning boards unanimously approve them, and here they are.
So it's not really changing any of the substance of the bills, it's just updating.
Making them.
Making it correct.
Correct. It's like, if you were to redo this warrant, you would make sure that uh, Article seventeen was in there.
Um, and then Article twenty-one is to amend the bylaws, um, because at the last annual town meeting, we adopted a different wage for employment, but that's still working through the process. So until we have that new policy, we have to adopt the bylaws so we can pay people. So that's Article twenty-one. Okay. So, I mean, towards the.
I'll make a motion to approve the um, articles that were not held. Should I number them?
So I think that's everything but ten, eleven, and twelve.
Yeah, do. Just like numbers?
And fifteen. Yeah, why don't, yeah, if you are, just say the one.
So I'll make a motion to approve Articles one, two. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, eleven, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Should I use the number that's on here, or, so eighteen?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one.
Okay, looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Roland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer's aye.
Aye.
All right, great. So let's see. So I have ten fiscal year budget. I think we should probably wait on that one, because we're still waiting, we still moving numbers. So I think we have to wait until the next meeting.
On number ten?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you think, does everyone agree? It's kind of.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, twelve, so I held this one, and I hold it at town meeting. No one in Millville gets stipends except for the school committee. And I don't think that's fair, so. I always hold this and vote against it. It still passes, so I'm really voting on principle at this point, but I just don't think it's fair. I think either everyone gets stipends or no one gets stipends, so. Yeah.
I'm with you.
I'll make a motion to not recommend Article twelve?
Actually, we might make a recommend, and then you do ayes and nays.
Okay, so, I'll make a motion to, um.
Yeah, make a motion to recommend Article twelve.
Make a motion to recommend Article twelve?
Looking for a second? I'll second, just to keep it moving. Um, so any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Nay.
Nay.
Andrew? Nay. Matthew?
Nay.
Okay. So it's.
Zero five.
Zero five.
Okay.
Um, okay, we did not do anything with BMR stabilization. Fifteen.
Zero five.
I know, should, I guess we shouldn't recommend.
Take no action.
Number fifteen?
Yeah, because that's, so Peter was hoping.
Yeah, just go zero five and then.
Yeah, okay.
Everybody knows we don't want it. Then we're, we're gonna recommend no action anyway.
Yeah.
But somebody can always offset that.
Yeah, no, they can. All right, so I guess, um.
Make a motion to recommend?
Yeah.
Uh, make a motion to recommend uh, Article fifteen?
Second, well, you beat me, sorry.
All right.
Trying.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Oh, nay, sorry, yeah, so used to.
I don't want to put no too much pressure on you. If you want to vote aye, you can. It can be one, four.
Past my bedtime, so.
I know, my too. Okay, so nay. Richard?
Nay.
Andrew? Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so it's a zero five. Okay. And.
Through you off of that whole second, see?
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll have to, so we'll just wait on the budget.
Correct.
Okay.
Good.
Great, all right, sorry, I can't believe I missed that on the agenda, just because I have so much writing on here. All right. Okay. Old business, so now, moving along. Departments, we have nothing. Public Forum, we actually have people here for Public Forum, anyone? Richard, sure, come on up. You're gonna be as much trouble with your, with your wife as I am with my husband.
Two questions. Richard Hertoate, Ronan wrote, um, Article twelve, where it says no one gets a stipend, does that apply to everybody or excludes uh, the regional vocational school?
So, no, so that's also in the budget, so I, in the past, have, have I held that? I'm not sure. I think someone might have.
Nobody gets one except for.
So no one gets one except for the schools. So the BBT school rep gets one, and the BMR school gets them as well. In order for them not to happen, you have to hold them in the budget. Um, so yeah, so that's what you need to do. I don't do that because it always passes, but.
Okay.
On principle, I voted no on the article.
Okay, one more thing, on the uh, next meeting where you have the discussion between the two candidates for the COA.
Yes.
Uh, could, and I don't mind doing that, uh, submit a copy of my license, because when I was at that meeting, uh, he was going to do this, he was going to do that, he was gonna do a whole bunch of things, and I want to make sure that the town is having stuff done by a licensed person, so if that can be a request. I don't know if that's a reasonable request, that because of his qualifications. Again, I'm not sure if it's a reasonable request, but.
Well, I think we can, Peter, can you reach out to the COA and say?
Get licensing credentials.
For liability purposes.
I think we do, no.
I have a license, but when I was at that interview, he was gonna check the compressor and the generator, and he's gonna do automotive work, and he's gonna, he's gonna do a lot of things, which is fantastic, but again, having been in business, liability of the town and everything is is kind of critical.
Yep.
Okay.
And that's, that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Peter, announcements?
Okay, so the Conservation Commission is having a Millville Town Cleanup Saturday, April twenty-ninth, nine to noon, rain or shine. They ask people to join them, and questions you can contact Eric Olson. It's ericallenolson@gmail.com, or Pam Maloney, PJMaloney@me.com. And meet at the Millville Library between nine and nine-thirty for gloves and trash bags. And you go around picking up litter and so forth around the town. It's a nice event, great they do that.
Yeah, I usually do my street. If everyone did their street, then everything would be clean. So.
If everybody took the trash home with them.
So I think some of it. So that's true also, but I I think some of it too happens, um, like, I notice on trash, like, we always have garbage bags, so we nothing, but on recycle day, because we just put, like, cans and stuff, like, I'll see, sometimes I think the wind blows and they get blown around, so I think that happens sometimes. So I think it might be unintentional. Messes. Okay. Okay.
Okay, I had one other announcement that I noticed on Facebook today, which is the Family Fun Day at BMR, May thirteenth, one to four P M, at the high school. And we'll probably make that announcement again next week, and it'll be on the agenda. Just put that out there.
And Peter, correspondence?
So we have a request for Hartford Marathon Foundation to have the annual RYMA Con Relay. It's a run-ride thing that's come through town previously, and what's happened in the past is you've authorized me to sign off approval of the town. We just, they're basically crossing at the central street of the, of the bike path.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay? And it's between six and ten forty-five A M. And it goes through, you know, Blackstone, it goes into Oxbridge, and the police usually stand by there, just, that's all that really happens. It's not a parade, it's not a toll day or a parade permit, it's just requests for
Have a police officer there to help.
Approval, yeah. So.
Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Hartford, wait, yeah, Hartford Traverse RYMA Con Relay for August twenty-six, twenty twenty-three.
Looking for a second?
I'll second it.
Ooh, Matthew coming for the second. That's right.
Oh, you're top of your game as the day goes on.
We forgot to tell you that whoever seconds it also has to compete. Sorry to tell you that.
Richard is really enjoying having one single year of seniority over Matthew.
I'm full of zingers. Listen, we're not, I don't have any caffeine here, so we gotta lighten things up a little bit, you know? Got a few laughs here, keeps us all awake.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
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 All right. Okay. Two more notices?
Yep, so the other one is just a notice to let folks know, in the month of June, the Providence and Worcester Railroad will be doing some herbicide management of brush and what's, whatnot along the railroad tracks. And they're required to let us know, because it's within a, so many, such a distance of a school, so this is just that notice. Okay. All right. EPA Stormwater MS four, that report that we talked about last meeting.
Yep.
That's being worked on by Chrissy, who works for Brian. I don't know if the work will get done in time, might have to ask for a little extension, but efforts are being made to get that done.
Wait. Okay, meeting minutes?
All you have is March sixth.
Okay, I guess the one thing, because we did talk about the budget already, but we were considering at one point to turn on a few more streetlights, and Chief Coop gave us a list of his top ten or twelve. Seeing as the budget is underwater by six figures, I don't think we should be adding any streetlights, unfortunately. So, and I know there will be citizens who are disappointed and unhappy, um, but we're underwater by six figures, so I just wanted to mention that. I did notice that Sherri has not been putting my jokes in here, so I don't remember them off.
Funny.
I can't believe you said it.
I can't believe I did either. Couldn't control myself.
That's okay. I'll get Peter back next week.
You will.
I think you can be on the zoning board.
There you go.
So I'll second that.
Oh, fooey.
Okay, I honestly didn't see anything with the meeting minutes.
I found one thing, so on the first page, second line, it just has re-sign on, it should be
A reappoint, yep.
I didn't see anything else, but.
Okay.
So, looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the March sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes, as written with minor adjustment.
You got this one, I gotta abstain.
You have to abstain?
I wasn't here March sixth.
Oh, yeah, that's right. March sixth?
Oh, yeah, I guess so. All right, I'll second it then.
Thank you, Richard. Any further discussion?
I'll allow it. I'll allow it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. So Roland?
I'll stand.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Stand.
Okay.
So I can correct it, but you can sign.
Okay, great.
We'll change the sequencing.
And then Selectmen Reports, does anyone have anything? Roland, I'll start this way. Roland?
Nope.
Richard?
Nope.
Andrew?
I had one quick question, so for the Highway Department, do we have a, do we know what's the situation at that point? Because I know nobody technically ran for it, so that's why I'm wondering.
All I know is that there was a submission for payroll since the election. So that tells me that that's
There'd been a
He hasn't come in and
Sworn in.
Sworn in.
Okay.
Okay. So we should have him do that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
What I look at is, we have a highway supervisor who needs to be sworn in.
Okay. Matthew? Okay, so I guess the only thing I want to say is, um, last time we talked about, since we have a full board, maybe surveying the citizens in Millville again. I think that was unclear for some people, for whatever reason. So I think after the town meeting, so maybe May sixteenth, we should come up with some questions and see. I think, they're mostly budget-centered, right? So we're up against the wall this year, we might be up against the wall again next year. So depending on what free cash looks like, you heard from the Chair of the Finance Committee that we typically only get five percent, so we can't what we're doing is not a best practice. I actually read the Finance Committee handbook, and it says that you should spend a portion, it says you can spend a portion of free cash on your operating budget, provided it's like a reliable amount we get back, but I think we, we don't know that it to be reliable, yeah, so that's why I kind of shy away from that, but that's just one thing that we could